Good morning. Want to welcome all of you to the April 12th, 2022. The Sacramento County Board of Supervisors want to thank you all for joining with us this morning and apologize for a bit of delay here just as we were getting things sorted out prior to the morning session. So see some visitors in the audience. We're glad you're with us and we'll get to our speakers in a moment here. But first, I want to turn to our clerk to call the role, establish a quorum. And we've got a member absent and one who is calling in from remote locations. So we'll need to kind of go through that and make some announcements and then we'll again jump into the agenda. So good morning, Flo. I'll turn to you to get us started here.
All right. Thank you. Supervisors, Serna? Serna? Oh, I couldn't. Okay, thank you. Desmond Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum and let the record reflect that Supervisor Kennedy is not present today. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, April 15th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. Let me finish with the rest of the announcements.
All right, very good. Yeah, go ahead and finish with the rest and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
All right. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and the use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant in compliance with the directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. The meeting will be livestreamed and open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing of face coverings, mask, or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make a comment and are limited to making one public comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda item or call off-agenda matters. And when the chairperson calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. To make a public comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call to be placed in queue to make your comment. Clerk staff will transfer calls into the meeting. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. You may also be on hold for an extended period of time and your patience is appreciated. You can send a written comment by email to boardclerk@saccounty.net and your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see the clerk staff or assistance or contact us at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.net. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Great. Well, thank you, Flo. With that, then I'd ask you to please join Lisa Travis. You lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and join us. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, we're going to then go into, we have some off-agenda speakers. We also have an off-agenda item that we'll need to take up. So let's take up that item first. Madam Clerk, if you want to call that item, please.
Yes, so your off-agenda item number one is a request. First, you need to determine the necessity to hear the item before you can take action on this matter. And the matter is regarding the resolution authorizing continued remote teleconference meetings pursuant to the Ralph M. Brown Act.
Okay. Do we need any explanation behind this before we take that item up? Lisa, you want to just real quickly?
The decision to adopt this resolution was made after the posted agenda and it's doing for, it's going to be done for administrative efficiency and the continued public health emergency. So we are asking that you determine it to be necessary to be heard today and then act on the item.
Okay. And we can do that with the three members present?
Correct. It would have to be three members present.
Okay, all right. So we've heard the item called and we'll need a motion and a second. Okay, so we have a motion. So we have moved and seconded then to necessity to hear. Is there any public comment on this item?
I haven't received any.
Okay, no, I'm just looking to the audience here, so I don't see anyone on this item. Okay, all right, then I'll bring it back to the Board and we'll go ahead and call for a vote. Necessity to hear this item and then we'll actually have the item before us.
I'll take a roll call vote. Serna?
Aye.
Desmond Frost?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
A unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, so that's a necessity to hear. Now, the item actually is before us, so yeah, Lisa.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So the matter is to then continue teleconferencing under the Ralph M. Brown Act. So, all right, then we have a motion. Do we have a motion then to consider that?
I moved it.
That was the first vote. That was the necessity to hear on an off-agenda, so you're moving the actual item itself.
Yes, so moved.
Okay, and so the item itself is resolution authorizing continued remote teleconferencing meetings pursuant to Ralph M. Brown Act. So, all right, know anybody on the phone to speak to this?
Not for this item.
I don't have anyone signed up on this item. All right, with that then, roll call vote, please.
Yes. Serna?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, all right. That's the one off-agenda item we have. Then we also have public comments on matters, not on the public agenda. I would just note too that we have speakers here this morning. I also notified the clerk this morning, we have a party that's going to appear at the 2:00 session on an off-agenda, so make the accommodations. So we'll, when she's present, we'll actually have her make her comments then. So, all right, with that, we'll go to our off-agenda speakers. I have a number of folks. Ryan Harris, followed by Dan Aderhold. So if you want to come forward, Mr. Harris.
And we also have a phone caller, too.
Okay, we have a phone call as well. All right.
Just a second to get ready here.
Sure.
Good morning. Lot has happened in Sacramento since this last meeting. It's really sad. I was watching Mayor Steinberg and he had just helping the youth. I don't know if he has attended your guys' meetings because you guys don't do that too well around here. I've come here multiple times talking to you guys about how African-American men, women, are being treated incorrectly within DHA. You guys have done nothing about it, haven't even contacted me to help with it or anything like that. Other members have seen it. They've heard my concerns. They've come up here and you guys treat them the same. This is going to be an example right here. I'm going to hit play on this video. White lady, black man, both came in, put stuff on the overhead. You guys only aired what the white lady showed.
You are not the boss. Who is?
That's the document.
I've watched Ryan Harris bring you a concern for over a year now. I have looked into his concern myself. Have any of you helped this man? Do you know the amount of bullying you are permitting?
As you see, he puts it on the, right here on the podium. So I slowed that part down for you guys. That way you could tell he puts it on there. I kind of repeated it, too. So it's very clear that he did put something up there. But again, you'll see it was never aired.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. Don, I really appreciate you as a service member and what you're trying to do for veterans. And Major, I really appreciate that. Now, for my statement, are you aware that Ryan Harris is a black man who's been asking for help for several years? Ethan Die is the new director of Department of Human Assistance and Ethan Die wrote an email that was very, very, very discriminatory against Ryan Harris.
Are you guys ready yet? The email that Ethan wrote?
I can give you copies of what the email say. Are you also aware that Ethan Die jeopardized the policy of the welfare recipients? Can you tell me how the director can assassinate the character of employees but also break confidentiality but can also get a promotion? That's very concerning to me. As of, as of right now, Ryan Harris is at risk of losing his job over asking for help and I don't understand why somebody who helps a community on multiple level tubes, who's in training videos for the community, when you get hired, is getting in trouble for asking how to fix policies to make policies that are broken better. I just don't understand that. For me, I would like an investigation into what's going on as a concerned citizen and veteran. I feel that my tax dollars are getting used for things that are not really useful to my community and I really would like to have something going on about this. Thank you.
His document was never again played. You see him removing it from the thing. And that's what I'm here to say is that you guys continue to do this to the black community. You guys need to help the black community and quit allowing individuals such as Anna Edwards and Ethan Die to segregate us, to retaliate against us, and discriminate against us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, next off-agenda speaker, we have Dan Aderhold. Dan? And then Dan will be followed by Davi Rodriguez. Good morning, Dan.
Good morning, you guys. Board of Supervisors, good morning. I'm here today because, last meeting I was talking to Phil Serna about getting help and he was going to help me. I haven't had a chance to email him and contact him with the help I need because attacks have been going on against the homeless and I'm really upset about this because they're attacking my Metro Homeless crew and people are keeping their camps clean. Rich Desmond, I know you're the new guy here and I've been following you. I've been getting your emails all the time and you seem to have a good heart. But what I'm upset about is the attack against the homeless on American River Parkway. You should be going after the criminals, not the homeless who are just trying to make the best of the situation they're in. You're not only attacking good people, but you're attacking fellow veterans. I've stated this over and over again. Seventy-eight percent of our homeless here in Sacramento are fellow veterans who fought for this country. Okay? And it really pisses, makes me mad that you guys keep going after the homeless when you guys should be helping the homeless. You guys should be helping them into homes, not relocating them to another street corner or another cold slab on the street. I'm telling my crew members that they're not, they're not going to be moved to the over no slab on the street because it's against Boys v. Martin, Supreme Court ruling. You guys were supposed to provide them a home, not sit there and attack and make a new law to go around the Boys v. Martin case and say that the homeless can't be on the American River Parkway because they're damaging the American River Parkway, sir, because we are the ones that cleaned and saved the American River Parkway when park recreation had no money to save it. I'm just educating you on that part, sir, because I know you're new here. Don, I respect you a lot. You and Phil Serna and Sue Frost, you guys are wonderful people. You guys' hearts are in the right place. I've been following you guys on your emails. You know, everybody needs, and Phil Serna especially, you guys always out here helping the homeless. It's time to do the right thing. Stop the attacks against the homeless and it's all work together. I heard about this American Rescue Plan you guys are coming up with. There's a lot of stuff in there that's actually, I think, is unconstitutional that you guys are doing. You guys are trying to make it relocate like into like another camp, it's like another term account for them to go to, where they don't actually have homes. That's not the solution. That's actually another problem that someone else is going to complain about down the road about not having funding to do. Okay? I seriously think you guys are on the right path when you guys are talking about building homes for them. Yes, that was, needs to be done. I seriously back you guys up 100% on this. But we also need help out here. Rich Desmond, we're heading into your area pretty soon to clean up your area. I don't understand your frustration with the trash buildup. I've been there. I've seen the trash built up in your district area. Sir, we are heading there after we get done on the American River Parkway here in Phil Stern's area. We're heading your area next. And then we're going to be going into cities to clean up our other cities like we've always been doing for years now. Just give us time to do this and clean up the community like we should be doing. Everybody should be working together to help our community. And stop this attack on the homeless, I'm asking. Please stop this bill from passing because my Metro Homes crews don't deserve this. They have been working day in, day out, every day for years now without being paid or promised anything because they love their community. We have proved this. We've done it on news dozens of times, proven this to our community. Just please, give us a chance. Come meet my Metro Homes crew members. Like I told you guys, come meet us. See the other side of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, next off-agenda speaker is Davi Rodriguez. Davi? Mr. Rodriguez, Davi, you're next.
I just wanted to come today and thank you for intervening on our behalf with the sheriff. They did finally get in touch with us and they seem to be taking this a bit more seriously than, you know, previously. And they even brought search dogs out to the house, eliminated the, one thing we were fearful of is that he was buried in pieces in the backyard. So, but they are staying in contact with us now and that was a hell of a lot more than we were getting. My wife was getting quite frustrated on that. So once again, I thank you collectively and individually for spurring that. Also, wanted to point out that we're still looking for his vehicle. It has not turned up either. It's not a common vehicle in that, you know, not that many of them were made. They're out there, but they're not like the Honda or anything like that of equal years. And he has Army stickers in the back, inside, and the front, being a, you know, 30-year retired Army man. So it's hard to believe that both him and his vehicle disappeared and haven't turned up in, what, four months or something like that? I'm starting to lose count, but somebody may know something. That vehicle may be sitting in a backyard somewhere, going in pieces, in a scrapyard, in a storage yard, or even at the bottom of a deep hole in the river somewhere, but I don't want to give up hope yet. Also wanted to say that Sheriff's Missing Persons Unit, you know, is claiming poverty. I don't know what goes on on there. How would I? I know you guys usually give the sheriff a lump sum of money and he does what he needs to do with it, but you might consider an earmark next time because they say he's got 120-something missing persons at any given time. They have one detective doing the work. And I don't know, it's probably not enough. The dead, they have the coroner to speak for him, for them. Children have the CPS and living people, they can file charges, but the missing, they really have very little. They can't speak for themselves and sometimes there's nobody like me to speak for them. And they don't get, you know, any respect down there. So I think the perfect murder would be missing, like Jimmy Hoffa, you know? Nobody can prosecute if you don't have the corpse or, you know, injuries show up or anything like that. It's just a sad state of affairs, I've come to acknowledge. So anyway, thanks and keep your eye out for him. We're still looking for him.
Good. Well, thank you, Davi, and good luck on the, on the search. Hope we, hope we find him. Okay, then next, several speakers. I have Charlie Salt, followed by Jim Ostrowski, followed by Sylvia Garcia.
Hi.
Good morning, Charlie.
I'm Charlie Salt. I'm Director of Public Employees with Station Engineering, Local 39. And I just came to discuss some concerns we have with respect to negotiations. Our contract expired March 31st. And what I provided some information to you, a year ago I came to this board meeting, or approximately a year ago, and showed you a chart of, that the county had provided, Local 39, of the terms of the last agreement.
Charlie, just one second. I wanted to get, take the conversation outside. Okay, I just didn't want them to, get us some back feedback. Go ahead.
That was reached and I just wanted to bring that back because we're not getting really much movement at all on the bargaining table. The 2% increase minus the 1% they paid towards their retirement resulted last year in our members of, you know, working here 23, 24, 25 years, total of like $3.48 a week take home at the end of the day. You know, it's hard for me to imagine that any of you could look your employees in the eye. Our guys are out there working, you know, carrying the trash and repairing the streets that, you know, a $5 increase over the term of the contract per week is reasonable, given what they face and given what they faced during the, during the outbreak, right? So these are real numbers. You know, this is real numbers. This isn't manufactured. The county provided it. At the end of the day, this is what our folks brought home. Not enough to buy a gallon of gas, folks. And the second document is just the current CPI of 8.9%. You'll probably hear more about that, but the offer that's on the table right now from the county over three years does not match this month's CPI. So it's a real problem and I understand, you know, the dynamics of things. It's more expensive for the county to run its vehicles with gas prices going up. There's prices, there's costs to everything. Your employees cannot continue to be treated this way. It's, it's just, it's really almost to the point of being disrespectful to them at the end of the day. You know, you have a lot of suits that, that come up and make a lot of money that advise you. You're hearing from the people that are more at the bottom of the loop, the ones that are the blue collar folks that are out there working hard for you. You tell me, have your expenses increased over, you know, I'm sorry, my glasses. It's okay. You know, $8 a week in the past year? So the contract expired March 31st. You know, we're asking the Board, and much of this is right on your plate. That's who's being blamed, is the Board. It's not the administrator. It's not, you know, the executives. It's the Board saying that they're not, you know, willing to do this. So I'm bringing it to you and putting it in front of you. These are their numbers. It can't be sustained. You know, please talk to your bargaining team in closed session, you know? Give us a real offer that we can take and present respectfully to our membership. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, next, Jim Ostrowski, followed by Sylvia Garcia, followed by James Starr. Good morning, Jim.
Good morning. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Jim Ostrowski and I'm a governing board member for UPE 005. And I work for the Assessors Office. I'm here today to express my concerns with the current negotiations for a livable wage and livable contract. First, you have offered the county employees a cost of living of 2% for each of the next three years. That really feels like an insult to us. Every, even Social Security gave their people 5.9% and they announced that last October. Before today, we were sitting at 6.2 for CPIW, but today's release of CPI numbers will probably make that about 6.5 or 6.6. Your employees feel the pain in the pump and in line at the grocery store. We are trying to feed our families, but our purchase power is quickly diminishing. In the last year, March to March, gas has gone up 38%, food and home has gone up 8.6%. Utility and gas, utility gas services have gone up 23.8%. Electricity has gone up 11.11%. New cars, 12.5. Used cars, 35.3. And apparel has gone up 6.8% as of this morning's numbers. With these statistics, our living, our wage is not a living wage and 2% a year for the next three years does not come close at all. Your employees work hard for you and they keep us going. Another concern I have is debridement leave limiting employees to the max five calendar days a year. This is not a good subject to talk about after COVID-19. Some people lost more than one family member a year and you only want to give them five days. I guess we have to tell our loved ones not to die in the same year. We may not have enough time to take off because we already used up debridement leave a couple months ago. But if you can wait until after the first year, I'll give another five days to help the family. We can't control when we lose our loved ones. I have been working for the Assessors Office for almost 23 years as of next month. I have only used it twice and didn't even use the whole 40 hours. This county is growing and is growing, and the growing is not going to slow down anytime soon. With all the new housing going up in South Folsom, to all the new commercial and industrial buildings going up in Metro Air Park, which means your tax revenue grows, too. Your employees deliver, your employees deserve a living contract with a living wage. We need to have wages that keep up with inflation. It is fair and is the right thing to do. Thank you for taking your time to listen to some of my concerns.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, following Jim, we have Sylvia Garcia. Sylvia? And then James Starr and then Yolanda Augustine.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Fine, how are you? We can lower that, lower the podium just a little bit.
Oh, thank you.
There we go.
My name is Sylvia Garcia. I'm a union board member for 005 and work for the Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services. I'm here to speak with you in regards to the need for salary increases for your county employees. Over the last two years, we have seen an unprecedented increases in cost of housing, food, gasoline, and everyday services. The rise in the cost of living in the Sacramento area has outpaced the salaries of the average county employee resulting in financial difficulty for a number of your employees. The average rent for a one-bedroom apartment in Sacramento is currently $1,595, giving 2% only pays the rent, with hardly any money left over for bills and food. Your employees have families to support and with 2% does not cut it in the real world we live in today. Your employees are having to go out and obtain two jobs just to make ends meet. County employees have the lowest salary paid than any other county. And I would suggest that you put yourself in their skin to see what they're going through to try and support their families and pay their bills. Give the increase. Your employees are the core of Sacramento County. Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. Okay, next, James. Morning, James.
Morning, Don. Oh, thank you. Members of the Board of Supervisors, good morning. My name is James Starr and I have served the public as a county employee since 1985 in the Department of Human Assistance. I'm also an officer in UPE. And some of you have seen me here many times over the years with my coworkers to talk with you about contract negotiations. Now we're here again, but this time it's not business as usual. Some of us here today have jobs that have taken us out into the community every day providing vital services in the midst of the worst pandemic in 100 years, risking everything. Others of us stayed at our posts, hunkered down at our workstations, breathing through a mask for two years, watching as coworkers got sick all around us and never a manager to be seen, while we kept the county services running. Last year, we agreed to a nine-month contract extension with a minimal COLA because we understood it was a difficult time for County of Sacramento. That contract extension has expired and now the county's negotiators are acting as if it's business as usual. With inflation running at 6.5%, 6.5%, the county is again offering us a minimal 2% COLA that's totally inadequate to keep your employees and their families afloat. And they're proposing, in your name, to take away employee rights and benefits at a time and in a manner that seems not only uncaring but completely senseless, unless your intent is to deliberately goad your employees into a strike. Hopefully that isn't what you want. Prove it by valuing us. We served with honor. We stayed at our post. Value us.
Thanks, James. Okay, next, Yolanda Augustine, followed by Sarah Singleton, followed by Ted Samira. Got it low. Just a push of a button. Good morning, Yolanda.
Good morning. First, I give thanks to God for allowing me to be here. My name is Yolanda Augustine. I am a UPE 005 governing board member and senior office assistant under the Sacramento Correctional Health Services. Today, we come before you, the Board of Supervisors, in solidarity and awareness of shared interests, standards, sympathies, creating a psychological sense of unity- standards, sympathies, creating a psychological sense of unity, groups, or classes. It is most apparent that this is where the Board of Supervisors are not on one accord with its hard-working employees. Inflation is at an all-time high at 8.6%, and you want to offer us 2%. Well, your 222 won't do. We are the lowest-paying class, and without us bearing the weight, you would not be able to survive. McDonald's is offering a better package than what you are offering. You should be embarrassed. Solidarity, awareness. You, the Board of Supervisors, show us a lack of trust and compassion, especially to those of us, the real essential workers, who faithfully showed up to work day in, day out, during the worst part of the pandemic, and continue to fulfill and provide vital help for the community at various locations, to include, but not limited to, providing vital clerical support to nursing staff assisting the needs of inmates in the correctional facilities. The Board of Supervisor needs and should give more authority to the negotiating team led by Chief Labor Relations Adrian Johnson, whom unfortunately has failed to rise up and TA on our economic proposals. You, the Board of Supervisors, bumped us from the last Board of Supervisor meeting, proving once again we are not important. What are you going to do to give us a livable wage contract? Remember, 222 won't do. We are in survival mode. We deserve a salary increase. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Yolanda. Okay, next, Sarah Singleton.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Singleton. I'm a social worker for Child Protective Services, and I'm currently the vice chair for the UPE 008.
Sarah, maybe you can speak up just a little bit.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Go ahead, there you go.
Okay. I started working for the county as a social worker in 1999. At that time, I made $16 an hour, and my wages were largely taken by my housing costs. It's 22 years later, and unfortunately, I'm in the same boat. I make much more an hour, but my living, my cost of living has also gone up exponentially. I pay more for my pension, I pay more for my health insurance. My workload has effectively doubled and is more stressful than ever before. My coworkers are quitting left and right. Many of them don't even have a job to go to. It's that bad. If I look tired, it's because I worked until 11 o'clock last night. I worked Saturday, I worked Sunday. Our governing board has not made any outrageous proposals. They were well thought out, using available data and input from our coworkers across both DHA and DC FAS. What we want are cost-of-living increases that actually reflect today's cost of living. We want incentives for our remaining coworkers to stay on the job. We want reasonable workloads. When we do work overtime, we actually want to get paid for it. What we don't want is to have to try to choose whose funeral to attend due to a slash family death benefit while we're still embroiled in a worldwide pandemic. I hope that you guys choose to do the right thing here and support your employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, next, I have Ted Samira. I don't know if there's anyone else wish to, we have a couple callers off agenda as well, but if there's anyone else in the chambers that wishes to address the board off agenda, please see Lydia in the back, otherwise Ted is the last speaker I have signed up, so Ted.
Good morning. Good morning. I just want to start off, I thank you for entertaining my board here. Supervisor Frost, I liked the redecorations that you did here. You don't have the glass in front of us, so. So you heard from my, your employees, my board, my advocates, who represent close to 3,300 county employees. It shouldn't be lost on many of you. I know it shouldn't be lost on Ms. Edwards. I've come in front of you many of times, I spoke with you individually, in regards to working conditions, in regards to stagnant pay. You have folks here today, more than likely CBOs, nonprofits, wanting you all to help them, help them get out of this pandemic because their businesses suffer. You have landlords asking for the same. But what you're offering to your county employees, they cannot go and afford to go to a restaurant and eat. For Christ's sakes, it costs about $50, $60 to eat for a party of two. You heard one of my members talk about rent. Isn't that the American dream, to buy a house? But how can they buy a house if you're only offering 2, 2, and 2? Help them live that American dream. Gas hurts, just as it hurts every one of us here. Some of us, many of our members, cannot afford the electric cars a lot of the folks in the suits can, or drove in today. So they're paying it, they're filling it at the pump. You have a responsibility to your county employees to help them out of this pandemic as well, so they can sustain a livable wage, so that they can continue to come and do the work that make you all look good. They don't need another survey. They don't. To talk about the working environment that'll cost $200,000, $300,000, your negotiators at the table are blaming you five. You bumped us off closed session last meeting that you had. That was their words. It changed a little when I said, well, I'm going to go meet with those Board of Supervisors. Then they said, well, we don't know who bumped them off. So it had to have been someone here, because there's only certain people that can change that agenda. You go into closed session tomorrow. Do the right thing. Value your employees. Respect them with a livable wage. You hear from Charlie, Local 39. It's not just us, it's across the board. And for the unions that aren't here are inquiring on what's going on at our table. You continue to lead us closer, you control the trigger of a job action by your actions. Something has to give here, and it needs to give fast. On one hand, you extend a contract for our office technical bargaining unit for 30 days, but for the welfare and unsupervised bargaining unit, your chief negotiator there from, I don't know, Cassie Whitmore, you know, your hired gun, says you guys are almost at impasse with the 2%. We asked about the vacant positions. What are you doing with that extra money? What your chief negotiator, Adrian Johnson, said, well, that money goes, helps pay for management perks, other, I guess, projects they have in departments.
Ted, I'll ask you to conclude.
But yet they're doing the work of two or three people, Don. I understand my time's up.
I know.
But I think it's important that you all hear.
It is important.
They all hear. Because next time we come, we're going to be filling these chambers. You could avoid that. Thank you.
Thanks, Ted. Okay, that's the last off-agenda speaker. I certainly thank all of you for your comments. Now, we do have some folks on the phone as well, off agenda, so go ahead, we'll take the first caller, Madam Clerk.
Chairperson, I just wanted to explain, just in case there's any misunderstanding. We have two off-agenda callers. The second off-agenda caller has agreed to do all of their comments when you take up Consent Matters, because they're going to comment on 29, 34, 36, and 37. So right now, we have one off-agenda caller that Jillian's going to transfer over.
All right, very good.
Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Honorable Board, this is Debbie. I've lived in the county for 33 years. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Debbie. Go ahead.
Okay. I am calling in about medical freedom and freedom of choice today to draw your attention to the fact that there are 11 aggressive and divisive bills moving their way through the California Senate and Legislature. I'm calling today to ask that the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors write an opposition letter to the Senate and the Assembly on every one of these bad bills. You have sworn an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. In California, we have individual rights to defend our life, our liberty, acquiring and protecting property, and any statute or other authority shall be broadly construed if it furthers those rights and narrowly construed if it limits those rights. I'm calling to ask you to oppose AB 2223, which is infanticide, allowing the murder of babies up to the age of seven days. Based on the mental health of the mother, I'm asking you to oppose Assembly Bill 1797, Assembly Bill 2098, and Assembly Bill 1993. I'm also asking you to oppose legislature-proposed in the Senate for a Senate Bill 1184, 1479, 1464, 871, 866, and 1390. Again, these are very bad bills. They're very divisive. They're very aggressive. They require tyranny, medical tyranny, and we know that this is not in alignment with our California Constitution or the United States Constitution. I don't see a clock, so I don't know how much time I have left.
Debbie, you still have about 45 seconds, about a minute. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I didn't mean to rush. I know that I have gone to every one of the pharmacies in Sacramento, I went to six different ones, I've come back and reported to you that the FDA is lying to us when they say that they have issued FDA approval. There is no disclosure of agreements on these shots, there is no disclosure of the side effects. Somebody's lying. I don't believe it's the county. I believe that there's something else going on that's much more nefarious. But if we don't protect our county, if we don't protect our medical freedom of choice, we will not have another opportunity to get it back. So again, I'm asking the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to write opposition letters immediately to the California Senate and Assembly, addressing every one of these very bad bills. Funding the police if they don't, if they don't enforce a health order, that's absolutely divisive and aggressive. And with that, I think I'll close. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
That concludes your callers for off agenda.
All right. And so then other speaker will speak on the consent calendar when we call forward.
Yes, and when we take calls, we're going to take that caller first for.
Okay. All right, that is our off agenda for this morning. As I noted, we'll have an off agenda speaker this afternoon, I trust. Okay, with that, then we'll go to our consent calendar. You want to go ahead and call that up, please?
Yes, please. So for your Consent Matters, items 2 through 42, I just have one note. You're adopting an ordinance, this is item 16, you're adopting an ordinance amending chapter 22.20, title 22 of the Sacramento County Code relating to extensions of time for subdivision maps. And then I do have a note on the resolution recognizing the 75th anniversary of the Mount Zion Baptist Church. I understand the chairperson wanted to say a few words on that item.
Sure, we'll get to that. Okay, very good.
And that concludes my notes.
Okay, all right, let me turn my, turn my colleagues. First on the phone, Phil, did you have any items you wanted to call off the consent calendar?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Supervisor Frost? Supervisor Desmond? Okay. I did want to have some discussion around item 27. I know we got a response to my, to the question I posed yesterday, but I did want to have a discussion around that, but, all right, with that, then let's go to, go to our caller who has comments. Yeah, please.
So, I'm sorry, was there anyone in chambers for?
I don't have, I have on item 46, which is a hearing matter, though, so I, I don't have anyone signed up. Is there anyone here wishing to address any item on the consent calendar? All I had was a speaker on item 46, so.
Okay. So, all right, we'll take the caller. They're going to start with their off-agenda comment, and then they're addressing the board regarding 29, 34, 36, and 37.
Okay, very good. Go ahead, caller.
All right, could you transfer the caller, please? Hi, caller, please start with your off-agenda comment. You have three minutes for that comment, and then you'll need to, if you could go in the order of after that, 29, 34, 36, and 37?
29, yes.
Okay, so if you could start with your off-agenda comment, that would be great. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. This is Triana Clemens. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My off-agenda comment for today is regarding the California Health and Human Services Department, who is above seeing the Sacramento County CPS agency. I would like to, I'm here today because there is an outrage in our community due to no oversight of these programs, and countless families are being destroyed and dismantled, you know, when no imminent danger or no imminent circumstance exists, and children are being torn away from their parents, from loving homes. And then on top of that, the family preservation, the family preservation services that is supposed to be implemented into these programs are not being, they're not being withheld. And, you know, it's a big deterrent for parents to even complete case plans because they're not being offered the programs and services that go along with, that's aligned with their case. Therefore, children, especially minorities, are disproportionately placed in these systems, and they're taking years and years to go home, to back to their loving families, if that ever happens. So that's a really big issue, and I would like to bring that forth to you guys' attention on the board, so that someone can please, you know, open up an investigation and take a look at what's happening in our own backyards in Sacramento. Even the children are being silenced, and their voices are supposed to be heard. And even the ones that are 12 and over, they're being silenced and discounted when they're fighting to go home.
Okay. So does that conclude your off-agenda comment, ma'am?
Uh, yes.
Okay, all right, very good. So I'll restart the clock then for your comments on the consent, consent items. Okay. Go ahead.
All right, and this is for the on-agenda meeting for item number 29. I would ask the county to oppose the proposition of allotting, you know, almost $100,000 for law enforcement, because, I mean, they hardly solve any crimes, and integrating more law enforcement into minority, you know, minority communities is not helping. It hasn't helped, it hasn't changed anything. In fact, more people are being harmed because of this and targeted because of this. So I don't think that the money, you know, that they are, that's on the agenda should be allocated toward that. Instead, I believe it should be poured out into the communities that would, that are dedicated to helping families and men families.
Okay.
And for item, oh.
Okay, yeah, so I'll reset the clock then, that's for item 29. Next, for item 34. Go ahead.
Yeah, okay. And for item 34, I'm asking the county to oppose the. Yeah, okay. And for item 34, I'm asking the county to oppose the proposition for the $60,000 to be retroactivated for the emergency service funding. Again, as before, I don't believe that these programs are helping families. They are actually, you know, statistics are showing that the families are still being hurt in a manner where, you know, the services are not even producing any positive outlooks for families. So I don't think that more money to fund more, more agencies like this is going to do any, any positive good.
Okay. All right. Then next would be item 36. Go ahead.
Um, yes. And for item number 36, I am vehemently asking for you guys to oppose this because, due to the fact that, I mean, more money to allocate for the California Health and Human Services Department for the term of January 1st of 2022 to December 31st of 2024, for, to provide subject matter expertise to the Child Welfare Service and California Automated Response and Engagement System Project. I don't see how that's going to help families when there is no oversight, and this is going to allow more social workers who are inclined to perpetuate harm on families. This is going to allow them to go out to families' homes and still create false narratives that will be used by judges to then destroy and dismantle families. And there's already a huge problem in this area.
Okay. Thank you. And then you had item 37 as well.
Um, yes. And for item number 37, I'm asking for the, for the Board of Supervisors to disregard this and pro-vote no because of funds will be used to be misappropriated with no oversight on item number 37.
Okay. Very good. Well, thank you for your comments. Anything else you wanted to add? Any other items? We, but we got your comments on 29, 34, 36, 37, and your off-agenda comments as well. And thank you for your thoughtfulness. Anything else you wanted to add?
Yes. I'm a very active community advocate, and I speak for a lot of families. That's why there's been a big uprising and so many protests. And, you know, people are doing their best to make sure that these issues are being heard. We want to make sure that our voices are being heard and that these cases are being considered. And I'm hoping that this will spark someone to look into these things that I've said and to investigate what's actually going on, because children should not be afraid that they're going to be stripped away from their loving homes. Families who need help should, should be able to reach out for help and go get medical services without having a fear that they're going to lose their children for reaching out for help. Then these things are happening. It's genocide. It's genocide upon Americans, and it's not okay.
Okay. Well, thank you again for calling in this morning for, again, your comments on each of those items. And again, we appreciate your, your words. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other callers, ma'am clerk?
We do not have any other callers. I'm going to close the queues at this time.
Okay, very good. All right. Then we'll bring back to the consent calendar. I wanted to talk to item 27 and also had a comment on item 38, and then we'll, on item 40, we're going to, no presentation, but I want to come in. So item 27, if you call that item, please.
Item 27, Authorization to Execute a Revenue Agreement with Securus Technologies LLC for Inmate and Ward Communication Services in the Sacramento County Correction and Detention Facilities for the period of April 20th through April 30th, 2025.
Okay. I want to thank staff for the follow-on after the briefing yesterday. And as noted, the contract that's before us is for the charges for provision of communication services in the correctional facilities, both the main jail, RCCC, and the juvenile hall. The question I have, though, is in the staff report, and I know there was some clarification offered this morning, is that there are some upfront payments that come to the county that are going to be used to, basically, as I understand, to coordinate the software with software that the district attorney's office has purchased. And the, the comment in the, in the staff report was that there would be, one, from an investigative standpoint, there's some words, I guess, that would be called out that would call attention to issues that might pertain to activities in either in the jail and/or juvenile hall, or certainly outside. But it also referenced that it would assist in identifying emergency mental health issues. Clarification I received was, and it was sent with to all board members, is that the software, the $500,000 upfront payments for the first two years would help tie in with the district attorney's software, which has apparently the capacity to identify emergency mental health issues. Someone's in distress, maybe they have suicidal thoughts, whatever the nature might be. But I guess my question is, is that, one, I wasn't aware of that. Maybe the other board members were that the district attorney has this software. But who's in charge of monitoring that? Is it real time? Do we have medical personnel that are available for review of that so that if there are certain words and/or, I guess, phrases, and I trust that the disclosure, folks are aware that they're, that they're not having private conversations on the communication devices, whether it be telephonically or and over, over the tablets? But I guess I'm curious, is that, is the district attorney in charge of that? Who reports that? Is it to the sheriff's department? Is it to correctional health? And so I guess I'd like to have some answers around that. We're spending a lot of money on software, supposedly one for investigative purposes, for safety and security, both within the jail, I trust, and for inmates and those who are, trust are providing services within the correctional institutions, as well as juvenile hall. But what about this mental health piece of it? And who's in charge of it? And if the district attorney's in charge of it, who do they report to? And I guess that's my questions. And I don't know if there's anybody here that can answer. I see Eric here now, here this morning, so.
Yes, Chair, Board, good morning. Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive for the Public Safety and Justice Agency. And we do have, for this item, Chief Matt Peterson from Sacramento County Sheriff's Office that will answer your questions on that. Thank you.
But I don't know that Matt's in charge of all of it, but we'll let you give a try. Good morning, Matt.
Good morning. So the original concept of this, this technology, this software, which is really, it's separate from what we're asking for today for approval, right? So, but it is a, it's a transcription software for phone calls, and we can, we can flag certain words. And so I've already seen it in place. It's a new system that it will, it'll send alerts. So we have, we can have regional partners. The DA is leading this, this contract, but can add other law enforcement agencies to it to have access to this information primarily for investigative purposes, so they can receive alerts based on people who are in custody that they're monitoring. And so we also have that capability for the mental health aspect that you're referring to. And so we are, it's, it's new. It's a new concept, but we're, our staff in the jails have access to it, our custody staff. And when we receive any type of alerts of concern, we initially are making a custody contact with that person to assess them, but then also following that up with the appropriate referral to jail psych services to follow up. So it's, it's just a kind of a benefit, an added benefit to check on the people in our custody who may be having trouble that haven't overtly reported it.
Yeah, I don't disagree that it's, it's a benefit. We're spending a half a million dollars to tie into that, to the district attorney's system. That's what the half a million dollars over the two-year period goes to. I guess I'm curious, Matt, though, is that, how is that monitored? Is, he says via transcription, so it is immediate. And if it comes to sheriff's staff, who's on point? Because, again, we receive a lot of criticism, some of it rightfully so, relative to, you know, the care in custody. And I guess I'm curious is that if we have someone who is in distress, who, you know, whatever those words are that this picks up for, is it somebody at the DA's office that's watching that? Is it somebody at the sheriff's department? Is it somebody in our behavioral health division? Because I think, again, if we're going to spend this type of money, which we are, obviously from the security standpoint, the investigative piece, that's what's before us this morning. But a half a million dollars of this contract upfront goes to tie into the Veri system with the district attorney's office, if I'm not mistaken. Is that, is that accurate?
That is, that's the plan.
Right, right. Okay. But with the Veri system, it's under the DA's authority. As you said, I guess it's, it's very loose-knit, as I see it here, as to who's going to be responsible. Does it come to the jail commander? Does it go to, I mean, it's a 24/7 operation. Who is, you know, if it helps us to avoid some, you know, tragic outcome in the jail, whether self-inflicted or if there's other things that are picked up on relative to security, inmate on inmate. So I guess, I want to know if we're going to spend the money, which we're going to, how that tool is going to be utilized. And if it's under the DA's authority, then it's not necessarily your responsibility. It's the jail commander, the sheriff's department. Who reports to who? And who sees to it that that gets the information, gets to timely to correctional health staff, to custody staff? And I, again, there's just a piece missing here, as far as I'm concerned. So I guess, I don't know if you have the answer to that. That's why it may not all be on you to answer that, but...
Yes. So we have our compliance officers. We have a whole group of, from lieutenants down to deputies and records officers who are assigned to our compliance units, who are focused primarily on our compliance with the consent decree ADA issues. They will have access to this. Our investigative service, services units in each jail will have access, direct access to this, and will have those direct reports for anyone in our custody, and will be responsible for relaying that appropriately to psych services. I can't speak to the timeliness of these reports. I believe that you can set it to, there's, there's a lot of parameters to it, right? So you could probably set it to how often you want these reports delivered and things like that. But it's, like I said, it's, it's an added layer. It's, it's different than someone pressing their emergency button and letting us know.
Right.
It's a, it's a backup. It's just an extra measure. We'll do everything we can to respond as quickly as possible. And I just, I see it as a total benefit rather than a risk.
Yeah. No, no. Again, I can see the benefit. I guess the reason I'm asking the question, though, is that if there's something that seems to be imminent, and, but if it's not a real-time monitoring, if some of these transcriptions, you know, get looked at weekly or whatever, well, it could be well too late. But I assume from a security standpoint, you're going to want to know if something's imminent. So you're going to be, somebody's going to be watching that.
We'll be doing it as fast as we can, I'll assure you.
Yeah, on the security side. But what about on the mental health side?
For both, for both aspects of it, absolutely.
But who's responsible on, on the mental health side? You said, it's our...
I said, it's our compliance staff.
Okay.
And it's all the custody side. It's sheriff's department employees who will be the direct access and will assign the appropriate resources.
Okay. So there'll, there'll be a chain of command for watching for both investigative side, but also for the mental health piece of it, in that you'll have a protocol. Is there a written protocol then if you pick up on X? Maybe you already do. You already monitor phone calls, I'm sure. So maybe there's other telecommunications you already monitor under the current contract. But this is an added element. Again, I think it could be beneficial. It might save somebody's life.
Absolutely. And we've got, we've got training scheduled in the next couple of weeks to, to figure out the ins and outs and how this all works.
Okay. Again, I just, as was one member of the board, I'd be curious, you know, not about the training or anything, but just kind of, once the protocol is out, you know, understand what you've just said on the record, which I trust, and maybe something through Mr. Jones, we can kind of keep tabs of. Because again, if it helps us not just with the consent decree, but actually better the conditions in the sense that we're able to pick up on some red flags that might be the, be the button that somebody pushes when they're in total meltdown. And so I know my colleague, Mr. Desmond, has a question, so Richard, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for bringing this up. Actually, really good ideas, good points, and I appreciate it, Chief, your discussion. So I guess what we could explore is maybe does the system allow, I mean, and I understand, obviously, not every conversation is monitored in real time, but are there things maybe to program in this system where certain maybe trigger words can be identified, and if those words are heard during a transcription, that there's a flag issued to somebody so they can pay appropriate attention to it in this situation?
That's exactly...
Right. I mean, so I think it'd be great if we could explore that and find out from you if that's a feature of this system or a feature that's available, right?
Yeah. And that's exactly what the system does. That's the design of it.
Okay. But make sure those flags, obviously, in certain cases, if it's a red flag, like the one that Chair is describing, that those come right away so we can take action on them from a behavioral health standpoint. That would be, that would be great. So, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, yeah. Now, so we see the DA, certainly law enforcement. Does the public defender have access to this or behavioral health? You know, it relates, at least to that component that would be, and certainly there may be some HIPAA provisions relative to people's, you know, health. But, you know, the DA is obviously lead. Your lead, obviously, in the correctional institutions will be, you know, in charge, as you just said, you and your command staff. So how does the public defender, so if they, you know, they're, they're representing folks that are in the system, both in the juvenile system as well as in the adult system, do they get an alert if their, you know, their, their client is in distress?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so...
I don't have a definitive answer for that, but I don't believe so.
Okay. Again, I think as we're trying to, again, respecting people's roles and authorities as relates to criminal justice system, you know, I'm no expert. Seems to me, though, that if we're trying to build a better system and to, to, you know, be aware, obviously, of any threats, but also of people's, you know, issues that may arise because of they're incarcerated or mental, mental state and so forth, it seemed to me that the public defender, and maybe this is, maybe turn to Eric, I don't put it all on you, Matt, is there a way to coordinate this, again, to protect people's privacy, respecting that they're incarcerated, but also that we build a system where, you know, the, we have some mutuality with it relates to the partnerships here that are trying to assist us in certainly administrative justice, but also in due process, but also people's health while they're in our custody? Eric, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that?
I do, Chair. And so I'll work with Matt on, you know, what the protocols are when something is flagged, and then also the existing protocols for when somebody's in crisis and they are a client of the public defender's office, how exactly, and how feasible it is, what information can be passed to the public defender's office?
Okay. And again, my question kind of rises out of the fact that, you know, you know, as we're working for folks that either are, you know, on their way to be released and/or may come in and out of our system, you know, again, we learn about those folks. We're trying to deal with, obviously, the issues that, you know, brings them into the system to begin with and protect the public safety. But I just think that, you know, we've got some, you know, diversion programs. You have programs for, for, you know, post-release as well as pre-release. And I, and I think, again, as we're trying to, you know, improve what we do and certainly outcomes for, for everyone, I just think that that's a, is a key piece of it. So, again, I think it'd be a tool, and it could be very helpful, and hopefully avoid some tragic outcome. And sometimes you'll never know that because you'll get to it quicker, but I just think that's really important. So, okay. Well, thank you, Matt, and thank you, Eric. On, that's all I had. Let me ask, surprise of Serna, you're on the phone. Did you have any questions? I don't have a way to...
No questions, Chair.
Okay. All right. And then just, if I could go to item 38 very quickly.
Item 38 is the authority to amend and increase expenditure agreements with TLCS Incorporated and Towns Health Services by a total amount of $560,000 through June 30th to increase substance use disorder outpatient and intensive outpatient treatment service capacity.
I would, I would just say that, that certainly I'm supportive that we're going to have additional 102 slots available for folks that have been diagnosed, diagnosed with substance abuse disorder. But I think the, the piece that came out of my briefing yesterday that really rises to the level, I think, of additional concern is that not too long ago, we authorized 500 additional slots. Those are all full, as I understand from the report. We're adding 102. We know that we have, you know, a variety of crises in this community, but certainly one of the things is just substance abuse. And if we filled those 500 slots up already, which it hasn't been, maybe it's been a year, I don't know since we authorized those, I have no idea what the waiting list is. But again, from a budget priority standpoint, as we enter budget discussions, and again, we're, you know, fortunate to receive, you know, grants to assist us with those 500 slots, and we had to match some money, if I recall correctly. But I guess Bruce or Anne, I, my question is, is that if we're already full, we know, I don't know what the waiting lists are out there, but if we're trying to help whether folks are homeless or they're in distress or coming out of the criminal justice system, and if we're not making the grade, which, you know, there's probably always going to be more demand than we're able to meet, but, you know, maybe we need to add another 500 slots. I don't know. Because again, when I see what, you know, goes on in this community, as we all do, and, you know, and... as we all do, and, you know, and there's evidence certainly of mental illness, of substance abuse, whether it be alcohol or drugs, and if we've got folks that are seeking services, that are willing to take advantage of them, but we, but the end is full constantly, we lose folks in the process, and they remain, you know, homeless, or more distressed, or they end up dead, and I guess, I just, I'm curious, kind of what the assessment is here, because as we're looking at budget upcoming, we've got a lot of, you know, a lot of things on our plate that we're going to have to consider, but I guess, when I saw that, that the 500 slots, and I appreciated the response, because I'm really concerned that we have some really capacity demands that we're not meeting, so...
Thank you for your question, Supervisor Bruce Weisstaff, Deputy County Executive, so this is an issue that we track regularly with the Department of Behavioral Health, Dr. Siobhan Katari's actually on the line, she can speak to this too, but we got into the ODS waiver, the Medi-Cal waiver, you remember, a couple of years ago, so that we would be in a better position to meet this capacity issue, and that is working out for us, drawing down additional resources, but I can tell you that as part of our budget development process, this is an issue that we're looking at carefully, and we can speak to during our budget hearings as well.
Okay, I guess I just see the need to do more, and again, you can say that about a lot of things that we do, but here, if we can't help people get well, and deal with their issues, we're going to, we end up paying for it so many other ways.
That's right.
And, you know, and certainly, just the humanity of it all, and, I don't, do we only have 500 slots, don't we have like 700, what do we have total slots available? The 500 was additional, but what do we have available in this county?
Yeah, I'll ask Director Katari if she can speak to that, she's on the line, Siobhan.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, so Supervisor Natoli, thanks for your question, and yes, absolutely, we are looking and working with Bruce and others to look at our capacity overall, currently, we serve about 1,500 people per year in outpatient treatment, and currently, we have about 159 residential treatment beds for our substance use disorder program, you will see some requests that we're putting together right now to increase that capacity, and as a result of the ODS waiver, as Bruce mentioned, we're able to draw down more federal and state funding to actually offset the costs associated with that, and I would just say that one of the things you'll also see from us is, we are really working to build capacity, so for instance, even if we can pay for the, for the treatment, providers need to be able to, you know, recruit new providers, build new bed capacity, so that they can increase their overall services, so we're looking at strategies for that as well.
Siobhan, and I know other members of the board are punched in to speak here, but I just, one question comes to mind, and again, and maybe it's not proper to characterize as a waiting list, because if we can't capture folks in the moment a lot of times, and whether they be someone we're trying to help work their way out of homelessness, or in other, you know, we find them in the emergency room, or in the criminal justice system, what sort of backlog, then, you've given kind of the, you know, the plus side of what we have available, trying to build capacity, what do we see as being the folks that are in waiting at any given point in time, maybe it's hard to tell, but I guess I'm curious.
Yeah, yeah, no, thank you for the question, so I would say from an outpatient capacity, we certainly, we certainly can get folks in fairly quickly, once they're assessed, it's our residential capacity where we're struggling more, and where you'll see some proposals come forward, funding proposals, because we do have a waitlist that is significant right now, so you're absolutely right, that window of opportunity to get folks into residential treatment comes and goes sometimes before we're able to do that.
Siobhan, could you share what you believe the waitlist to be for the residential treatment?
Sure, we, it's over 400 right now, people on the waiting list.
Okay, and what, how long is the wait, depending on, I guess, some severity of the assessment, but what would be the typical wait time to get in?
Yeah, I would have to verify exactly, but last time I checked, it's definitely, probably in four to six weeks.
Okay, you have turnover that quickly, so if I was number 400 on the list, I could get in in four to six weeks?
Typically, residential treatment is about 30 to 60 days, and so, you could potentially, I think, I think you, you really addressed this in your comments, which is, you know, sometimes when you're on the list, and your turn comes up, you may not be ready to go at that point, and so I would say we have folks on the list who may or may not accept treatment, once they're ready to, ready to have a slot.
Okay, one last question, I'll turn to my colleagues, but so, but if somebody's ready to go in, in the moment, and I guess that's what concerns me, and I speak to folks frequently about this, that they've, you know, hit the bottom of the barrel, they're ready to go in, and we have the opportunity, and whoever's doing the assessment, whether it's a social worker, or it's mental health, or health professional, are we able to capture that moment, or are we still, say, sorry, you got to wait?
Yeah, no, so our team will continue to engage with someone in an outpatient way until a residential bed is available, for some people, that will work, we can keep them engaged, and keep them in treatment, until we can get them a residential bed, for other, for other folks, they really do need residential treatment, and so that's why, as I mentioned earlier, you will be seeing some proposals coming forward, because we absolutely do need to build that capacity.
Okay, so I heard from you and Bruce, we're going to see some more of this in the next few weeks, okay, Supervisor Desmond, Supervisor Frost.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I was going to, you know, I was asking our county execs some questions about this yesterday, and was actually going to bring it up in the context of our ARPA discussion later today with coordinated entry, because this is so important in the larger discussion about coordinated access, how do we, how do we coordinate our access to behavioral health treatment as well, and so, Siobhan, first of all, and I'm glad you're bringing up these points, because obviously, in dealing with our, I mean, certainly the broader issue of substance abuse disorders and mental illness treatment in general, but certainly in the homeless context, we're very limited in what we can accomplish unless we can provide treatment on demand, unless we can avoid people being put on a waitlist because of this population, as you all know, we need to strike while the iron's hot, when there's a moment of willingness, and I guess lucidity, to go in and take advantage of treatment, if we have to tell them, you got to wait three weeks to get in, then that's not effective, clearly, we're seeing the, the lack of effectiveness on our streets today as a result of that. So, Siobhan, a follow-up, when you mentioned 400 people on the waitlist, is that just for substance use disorder residential treatment beds, or is that for psychiatric treatment beds, either acute or subacute as well?
No, that is just residential substance use disorder treatment beds.
Substance use disorder, okay.
Correct.
So that's just, that's just that, and so we obviously have a big waitlist on the psychiatric side as well, I'm assuming, can you, Anne, I'm wondering if maybe to dovetail on our conversation, we had a little bit about this item yesterday, in terms of homelessness, when it comes to our outpatient capacity, I mean, obviously, if someone is experiencing homelessness, and we're able to get them into maybe some kind of shelter or transitional housing, or you know, permanent supportive housing program, can you explain what the county does in terms of connecting with those folks, and trying to get them connected to outpatient services for substance use disorder?
Yes, Supervisor Desmond, I'll do my best, and I will probably call upon Siobhan, who is...
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't...
Much more well-versed in this than I am.
I'll let you defer to whoever, yes.
But most of our service providers that provide services to the homeless do have access to behavioral health services, which includes both mental health and substance abuse services, I know there's a team that will go out and do an assessment, so that they know what level of care an individual person might need, and then gets referred to a community-based organization for follow-up treatment, Siobhan, could you verify that or add to that as well?
Sure, absolutely, Anne, thanks, so, we certainly have an access team in our behavioral health division that assesses folks for the level of care that they need, and the treatment that they need, this access team does work closely with our homeless providers, and our homeless providers, some of our homeless providers are actually also behavioral health providers, which is, which is great when that happens, but we do refer folks into treatment that way, and get them linked to the appropriate level of care in conjunction with our homeless providers.
The only thing I was going to add to that, Supervisor, when Emily Halcon's up here in a few minutes to talk about our coordinated access system, and our proposal for ARPA, she can speak to how that's, works into that system as well, so that, because that's a key, as you point out, it's a key part of what we're trying to provide.
That's great, I look forward to that discussion, too, I was planning to raise some of these issues during that discussion, and, you know, it's funny, it occurs to me a lot in our conversations about homelessness, is that, you know, there's so much, so many efforts around getting folks who are unsheltered, out of harms way, into a safe and sanitary shelter, that's not the end of the road, that's the beginning of the road, but it seems like all of these efforts to provide, you know, outpatient services to folks suffering from some kind of substance abuse, were much more effective, much more likely to make an impact, if we can get them into that kind of environment, I mean, I know, it is so much more difficult, and I know, you know, Emily and her team, and this board has invested a lot in these encampment teams, and crisis response teams, to be out there actually interfacing with, with campers out in the community, but that's a lot more difficult than if we can get folks in a more stable, you know, shelter-type situation, and that's certainly not lost on me, and I know that that's something that we're, we're all striving for, a couple other, one, maybe, just one more question, actually, on this, we've talked a lot about the RAND study, that I think that we're doing, that was done statewide, and I believe it's being done locally as well, to help identify gaps in our behavioral health system, and we've talked about it mostly in the context of, I think, psychiatric treatment beds, but will it address our gaps in our substance use disorder, both residential and outpatient as well, Anne, or is not, no, is that, is that beyond the scope of the study?
I'm not sure, I'm going to ask Siobhan if she knows the answer to that, if not, we'll have to get back to you.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, thank you, the RAND study is specifically focusing on psychiatric beds at the statewide level, but I, we did ask our local study to really look at bed capacity and treatment capacity across the continuum, so we will...
Oh, great.
Get some more information about that.
That's great, that'll help us establish a roadmap for this, for this board, for us at the county, so, okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Thanks, Supervisor Frost.
Thank you, Chair, thank you for bringing this up, because I agree that we need to increase our expenditures in the area of drug rehab, I think this is probably one of the most important things that we need to focus on, most of the questions that you folks asked, I, you asked a lot of, some of the questions I was going to ask, but I wanted to ask, Siobhan, you talked about the treatment, the residential treatment, it's four to six weeks, and for some of these people who have been on heroin and meth and fentanyl for years, it's four to six weeks, residential to an outpatient seems, it seems like they would have a hard time if they didn't have a longer inpatient treatment, what are, are you having good success with, with that outpatient treatment?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Supervisor, we, we actually, for different types of drugs, there is different recommended treatment, so it might be an average of 30 days of inpatient residential treatment, but then there may, there, there is often a need, especially if someone is unhoused, for a sober living environment, to support them for much longer term than that, and so, it is part of the continuum, not only to build out the treatment, but to also then build out those supports, and whether that be intensive outpatient support, or whether it be a sober living facility, those are all things that we do need to build capacity around here in Sacramento, yes.
Okay, great, and so we are, when they, when they're out of the residential treatment, you might refer them to a sober living environment, where they could stay for a while, and be surrounded by services, et cetera?
Yes, absolutely, and it's really based on the medical necessity of each individual, so we do do a comprehensive assessment, and then determine what level of care they really do need and would benefit from, but yes, we would make those referrals.
And does our criminal justice system work with, what happens when someone gets arrested, and they're in that jail cell alone, and withdrawing, is there treatment in the jails that's working through this program, or is it a completely separate program?
You know, it's a, it's a separate program through our Adult Correctional Health Division, but I will say that it is well-coordinated, so our correctional health staff do coordinate with our behavioral health staff, to ensure that as somebody does leave the jail, they are connected to services, and they do an assessment of, of their behavioral health needs and substance use needs while they're in jail, and connects them to providers, and so we do have providers even coming into the jail to provide substance use disorder treatment, so there's a warm handoff as folks leave.
So they're not just left there in a cold cell to withdraw?
Correct, that's correct.
Cold withdrawal, okay, and my last question relates to drug psychosis, and a lot of these people who have been on drugs for some time are not a suitable fit for a residential withdrawal program, because they, they might have paranoia, or they may be disruptive to the overall program, or the home that they're in, and so, do you treat those like serious mental illness, or how do you, is there a place for those kind of people?
Yes, thanks, so we do assess for co-occurring disorders, which are what you're suggesting, when someone has both a substance use disorder, as well as a mental health diagnosis, there are co-occurring programs that specialize in working with folks that have both challenges, and, and we do refer into those programs when appropriate.
Anne, I wonder if you could maybe email me information on those?
Sure.
All the information on that.
I would be happy to, thanks.
Thank you, Siobhan, thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Supervisor Frost, just one follow-on question, so, and Supervisor Frost touched on it, so when folks are being released from the jail, then you say you connect them to services, but I trust if they've been in the jail for any length of time, they may have at least, you know, gone through withdrawals, or dried out, and certainly under supervision of, of correctional health folks, but, so, is there some provision made that if you've got somebody who's being released, that you can actually get them admitted, or you just give them a card and say, well, you can go to, you know, such-and-such address, and, you know, you can sign up for, you know, outpatient treatment, but I guess I'm curious, is that, you know, for those that actually enter the criminal justice system, there was other issues that brought them there, but if the drugs were a part of that, or alcohol, but a large part probably drugs, is there some priority provision, again, not to jump ahead of folks who are in the community who haven't, you know, entered the system, but, again, I guess, I'm curious, because otherwise, you get that revolving door situation, and, and so I guess, Siobhan, or Bruce, or whoever wants to take that, but I'm curious, and maybe just one related part, with, with the judges and the courts, if they could order diversion, maybe, you know, you know, once folks have, you know, either they've been determined, and there's been some sentence administered, or whatever, I'm curious, because that's a piece of it, too, and they may, you know, have been held, but then they go, judge says, well, we'll release you, but if there's no place really to release to, or they go get on that waiting list for four to six weeks, well, good luck with that, so...
No, I'm happy to take this, and, and then ask Eric or Bruce if they want to add to this, this is a conversation that we've been having in terms of what exists currently, in terms of linkages, and where we're headed as a community and as a state, and I think you've heard me present about the CalAim initiative, and the goal to really start to swim upstream a bit, and do more in-reach into the jails, to ensure that folks are receiving psychiatric and, and medical services earlier on in the process, and then are appropriately linked through warm handoffs, so that as they leave the jail, it's not just with a referral, but it is really with a warm handoff, and those are things that we're actively working on here in Sacramento, and working alongside our state to leverage all the funding that we can to do this, and I know that both Bruce and Eric may want to add to that a bit, but I think we do have a presentation coming up to the board, where we can talk more in-depth about some of the strategies we're implementing.
Okay, thanks, Siobhan.
Just to add, Supervisor, thank you, Siobhan, for those comments, recently, we've had a group, interdepartmental group, looking at this question, in particular, folks who are getting out of jail, and how we can make these warm handoffs that Siobhan... made reference to. You recall that we established the Resource Center over at 711 G Street. That plays a key part in our efforts because there we have co-located public defender, behavioral health, probation, so that we really try to work together to make sure that those folks getting out of jail get to where they need to go to continue their treatment. And then additionally, in response frankly to some concerns raised by the downtown partnership here in Sacramento, we've pulled this group together that I referenced to see how we can buttress those efforts to make sure that people getting out have a place to go and they don't end up downtown and creating issues down there. So certainly an area of pretty intense focus that we've had in recent months.
And we're going to have a report to the board? Is that what Siobhan said?
Yeah, I forget the exact date on that, but there is something upcoming on that, yes.
Okay, looking forward to that, so, yeah. Okay, all right, Sue.
Yeah, I think that's great too, because it's a very traumatic experience for people just to be dumped in the middle of the night out of jail. I also wanted to just mention that, and I think you're, I think you're probably aware of this, but it's something that concerns me is these outpatient programs. I've heard about people who are going to the Suboxone clinic. There's drug dealers in the parking lot. Many of them are taking drugs just to be able to get through the waiting period to get their Suboxone. And I, I think there's, I don't know, some people falling through the cracks. And what I mean by that is they're not really getting off the drugs and it's adding to what they're doing. And I don't, I just wanted to bring that up. I don't know how you can control the external environment. I don't know if it's possible to test, to give them, you know, I think they, I don't know if they test every person to see if they have drugs in their bloodstream before they give Suboxone. But it can actually be a program that exacerbates their existing addiction if it's adding to what they're already doing versus substituting for what they were doing. I don't know if you're aware of this, but this is going on in the streets. This is what I'm aware of from people I know.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Cerna, Phil, go ahead.
Thank you. So first of all, I'm very encouraged by my colleagues' questions and expressed interest in how do we build up, stand up, expand our residential substance use disorder programming? You know, again, this is something that I've been extremely focused on, interested in, as it relates specifically to methamphetamine abuse and the intersection with that particular substance that is being abused widely in our community and criminal activity. And to the Chair's point, how do we best take advantage of the moment when we have someone that was booked addicted to meth, that gets sober, stays sober while incarcerated, and immediately upon release, either as a condition of release through the courts or with some very, you know, aggressive, quite frankly, aggressive, effective ways of immediately directing those folks to a program? We take advantage of it. You know, I've heard, I've heard the discussion this morning, and I'm well aware of what's offered now at the Resource Center at 711 G. But again, I'm going to stress the need to focus on meth, especially because there is no medically assisted treatment that have been developed for meth, where there have been for alcohol, there have been for heroin and opioids. And so for me, when we, when we have the discussion about how this is related to, again, criminal activity and homelessness, I think we need to be very clear about how we prioritize, you know, scarce resources to have expanded residential SCD programs in place. And, you know, I want to see the Resource Center succeed, no doubt about it. But I would argue that there's probably a greater need for more residential capacity for meth, again, because there is no pill, there is no substitute drug, there is no means of offering that to, you know, a longtime meth user to help them break their addiction. And so they're going to have to have more intense counseling. They're going to have to be, I think, closer and around others that are also battling their addiction to meth. So I would hope that in addition to the Resource Center being stood up and the Sure Center possibly expanding, which is really just focused on, you know, getting people immediately sober, that we can look at the prospect of a residential facility that is intensive and dedicated to meth. And then to Supervisor Frost's last comment or concern that she expressed about Suboxone, having done a lot of research and talked to doctors, being very familiar with what programs are offered, offered through the Transitions Clinic in my district in Oak Park, my understanding of the biology of it, where the pharmaceutical properties of Suboxone or buprenorphine is that you need to be, you know, a patient needs to have to have gone through withdrawal for, I think, at least 72 hours, then they can begin a titration of either Suboxone or buprenorphine. And if they are actually actively taking opioids, that's a bad situation. They're going to become extremely sick. So it would be so very surprising to me that people would, patients would be out there intentionally trying to make themselves sick by simultaneously taking opioids and seeking buprenorphine or Suboxone treatment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Phil.
Is that true, is that true, Siobhan? I mean, what is the physiological reaction? Does Suboxone act that way?
You know, thanks for the question. I will have to rely on my team to get me the answer for that, and I will absolutely get back to you. I did want to mention to Supervisor Cerna's point though, with regards to methamphetamines and medication assisted treatment, that we are currently piloting a MET program for meth with WellSpace. And so hopefully that will give us some more options in the future.
Yeah, and thank you Supervisor Cerna for that input because that's interesting. I have some more homework to do too.
Okay, you're good. Okay, Supervisor Desmond.
Yeah, real quick, no, thank you. I appreciate Supervisor Cerna's comments as well. And I forgot he was on the phone, or else I would have deferred to him. And I also thank him for, you know, his leadership in this area, particularly around, particularly around the unique challenges of methamphetamine. And, you know, he has certainly helped us focus more on this issue. So just, I just wanted to throw that out there to my colleague and thank him for his leadership.
Okay, thank you, Rich. Okay, any other questions or comments? Do we have anyone on the phone on this item?
No, so when we took comments earlier, the young, the last person that was on the phone said that they have one more comment for item 27. So do you want to take that?
Sure, yeah. Okay, we'll take that, take that comment.
The other comments, I had closed those when I announced that I was closing them before.
Right, okay, we'll go ahead and take the comments. So item 27.
All right. Could you transfer the caller, Darrell?
I want to call that matter up again, so folks know what the item is.
Authorization to execute a revenue agreement with the Securus Technologies for inmate and ward communication services in the amount, or excuse me, in the Sacramento County Correction and Detention Facilities for the period of April 20th through April 30th, 2025.
Great, thank you, Flo.
You're welcome. Darrell, could you transfer the caller? You have three minutes.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, okay, sorry about that, about earlier. I totally missed one of the items. So this is Triana Clemens, and I am vehemently opposing item number 27 to implement, allocate the $500,000, half a million dollars to implement the different technology service for Securus Technologies. That is, I believe the headquarters is in Dallas, Texas. But I researched this information, and every single, every single inmate or family member who's had interaction with trying to communicate with inmates that who are incarcerated, they've actually reviewed this company at a one. I have not seen any review of this company get a higher rating than a one. And some of them even said they would just rate it a zero if that was possible. The many complaints were that they were not able to communicate with the inmates. Most of their entire time of trying to, you know, get, make phone calls or even send video messages was them having to log off and log back on because there were so many different technology issues. And not only that, but there's a lot of people who are, who have complained about this company who actually had their bank account hacked into. And a lot of money was taken from them. And unfortunately, there isn't any, there isn't any appropriate customer service in place for them to even speak to someone here at Securus Technologies to get help. And I do understand that this company is actually governed by Aventive Technologies, who's the parent company of J-Pay, All-Pay, and Securus Technologies. But they do not, they're no better than the service that's already in place. So we will be asking for more money to be implemented to this program to have a worse outcome for families and inmates. And I just don't think that, you know, that would be appropriate at all.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
No problem.
Okay. Matt, if I could call you forward, just with the last comments, is there a customer service aspect to this? Again, obviously, the caller had done some background research on this, and there's a lot of components, but that communication is very important, obviously, to folks who are in custody and to their families. So if there is an issue, it's not in your hands, or is it? Is the sheriff to have the ability with the contractor then? You know, if the contract was attached, then it goes through a lot of detail. But what about the customer service piece of it? If folks have a complaint about connectivity, information being shared that then, you know, results in, at least allegedly, their bank accounts being hacked and so forth? Because there is money that's deposited via, you know, transactions and so forth, so inmates can, can actually, you know, call out or take streaming services and so forth, so.
So this, I think it's noted in the board letter how lengthy this process has been. I think it began close to two years ago vetting and selecting a provider. I believe all the due diligence has been done on that. And in addition to that, regarding access to phones, connectivity, we also have a contract with Preasis, who is our, they help manage that, that contract with our telephone providers. We've had that for several years. And they actively monitor to make sure the phones are up, the systems are working, and everything like that. So I feel like we've done our due diligence to make sure that the customer service level is high.
Is there a customer service referral number that if somebody wants to reach out? Again, you know, separate apart from going through Sheriff's Department, but that if they're satisfied, i.e. whether they're in custody or a family member, somebody on the outside, is there a customer service component to this?
I imagine there is, but I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Again, if I could be so bold as to suggest that if there is a customer service issue, that that number be made available, it's a 1-800 number. Again, I don't think all those need to funnel through the Sheriff's Department by any means. I mean, but I do think that if folks have an issue, that there needs to be some ability to reach somebody on the other end of that line, however they choose to do that, to, you know, register their concern, whatever it might be. So I guess if need be, I would even suggest that we make sure that that's included in the action today, that there be a customer service number available for folks, whether they're in custody or outside. Because I don't think Sheriff's Department needs to receive all those calls, so.
That's an excellent idea. We'll make sure that happens.
Okay, very good. Okay, thanks. Okay, all right. And then just lastly, for the consent calendar, I just wanted to note we have an item that is, item number 40 on our consent calendar. And it's congratulating the Mount Zion Baptist Church on the occasion of its 75th anniversary. Our congregation started out in 1947. I don't have a formal presentation today. I know this will be presented at one of their gatherings in the near future. Just wanted to call out though that they've been a part certainly of the ministry in this community and have grown along with the community over the years. And as we've talked about in some of the previous items, have done their part certainly as a part of their ministry, but part of their goodwill to reach out and assist those that are in need in our community and certainly have grown their congregation and actually over the years, expanded certainly their facilities, but also their reach to, to community members in seeking spiritual guidance, but certainly seeking help in some of the challenges in their day-to-day lives. So just want to offer our congratulations, there's a board resolution that'll be provided. But congratulating the Mount Zion Baptist Church on its 75th anniversary, certainly to their current spiritual leadership, Reverend Dr. Barry Smith, their leaders and members, both past and present. So that's item number 40 on our agenda, and make sure we get to the appropriate parties for their presentation aside from today's meeting. So with that, we have our consent calendar before us. We don't have any other items, Madam Clerk. We ready for a motion?
We do not, and we are, yeah.
Okay, so we're ready for a motion. Members of the board?
I'm moving.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Okay, and we have a second. So it's a move and second to approve the consent calendar noting the items that we discussed. And with that, if there's nothing further, then please, I guess, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Supervisor Cerna?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Very good. Thank you all for being with us this morning, fielding some of the questions and comments. Okay, with that then, we'll move from our consent calendar to our hearing items.
All right. So for your first hearing, item number 43, this is County Service Area Number 10, Benefit Zone Number 3, Public Hearing on the Activation and Levy of Service Charges on the Morvee South subdivision and the Activation and Levy of Service Charges on the Florin Vineyards 1 and 2 subdivision.
Great. Good morning, Dorothy.
Good morning, Natoli and members of the board. Dorothy Codani with the County Engineering Division. Various developments are required to participate in County Service Area Number 10, which provides trip reduction services. We are here today to conduct the public hearings for two of those developments, which will establish the associated service charges. The Morvee South subdivision is located within the North Vineyard Station specific plan area and is located near the intersection of Florin and Waterman Roads and proposes 90 residential units. The Florin Vineyards development is located on the west side of South Watt Avenue, also near Florin Road. And this development proposes an entirety of 285 residential units. The service charge was established for a portion of those units in 2015. And so today's public hearing will be establishing the service charges for the balance of the 77 lots. Notices and ballots were mailed to the property owners on February 25th, and the current single-family residential charge for annually for this district is $116.42. We do have staff from the Department of Transportation available today for any questions that you may have. This concludes my presentation. And so if the board has no questions, we request that your board open the public hearings, consider all testimonies, objections, and protests, close the public hearing, and direct the clerk to tabulate the return protest ballots.
Okay, thank you, Dorothy. Just let me ask any members of the board, any questions on the item? Don't see, Supervisor Cerna, anything? Okay, I don't see any questions, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing and ask if there's any comments, either in chambers or on the phone. Have any sign-up sheet?
I do not have any public comments here on the phone. I, I do not have any public comments here on the phone.
Okay, all right. Anyone wish to address item 43? All right. Then seeing none, then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the clerk for tabulation of the ballot. And then depending upon that outcome, we'll read that into the record.
All right. And so we have three ballots for this item.
Yes.
So I'll start with the first one. The legal owner is Joel Kenneth Lucic and Carolyn Marie Lucic, trustees of the Lucic Family Revocable Trust. This is for parcel number 0640072014000. And the address is 8895 Southwatt Avenue. And they are in favor of the annual charge. I'm opening the second ballot now. The legal owner is Florin Vineyards 273 LLC, a California limited liability company. Parcel number 06400720240000. Address 6855 Gardner Avenue. And they are also in favor. I'm going to open the last ballot now. All right. The legal owner is TNT Investments LLC, parcel number 0660070050000. And the site address is Florin Road. And they are also in favor. And that concludes the ballots.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, Dorothy, you've heard the ballots tabulated, so you'll assist us then, I guess, in filling the resolution.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
So we have two resolutions and I will read into the record the fill-ins for the first resolution that regards the Morvai South subdivision. And so in section two, actually, is it the same order? Yes. Section two, at the close of the tabulation, the board received zero oral and written protests, which the board has duly considered. At the close of the tabulation, the board received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total amount to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the service charge and 0% was in opposition. The second resolution regards to Florin Vineyards 1 and 2 subdivision. And again, in section two, at the close of the tabulation, the board received zero oral and written protests, which the board has duly considered. Section three, at the close of the tabulation, the board received two protest ballots totaling 100% of the total amount to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the service charge and 0% was in opposition.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have it for the record. If there's nothing further, then we'll need to move the approved resolutions. The chair would so move.
I'll second.
Okay, so moving second then to move the resolutions as read into the record. If there's nothing further, then we'll go ahead and call for the vote, Madam Clerk.
Serna?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Ayes.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Item 44 is county service area number one, zone one, public hearing on the benefit category change and levy of increased service charges for Morvai South.
Okay. Good morning, Cheyenne.
Good morning. Chairman Natoli and members of the board, I am Cheyenne Raymond with the County Engineering Division. Morvai South is in the North Vineyard Station specific plan area, located approximately 1,100 feet south of the intersection of Florin Road and Waterman Road. The project consists of 70 single-family parcels and one park parcel. During the entitlement process, the project was conditioned to provide full funding for street and safety light maintenance. In response to this condition, the project applicant submitted an application to the county to initiate the benefit category change process for county service area number one, which provides street and safety light maintenance throughout portions of the unincorporated county. A notice and ballot were mailed to the property owners notifying them of today's public hearing. Currently, the site is a single parcel in the street light only benefit category and is assessed annually $2.56. The proposed benefit category for the project is in the decorative, street and safety light category. Based on current rates, the 70 single-family parcels would be assessed $73.44 each annually. And the non-residential parcels would be assessed $1.46 for every linear foot. And there's an estimated 719 linear feet. So the overall total cost annually for the project would be $6,190.97. To address any questions, both myself and DOT are present.
Okay. Thank you, Cheyenne. Any questions? All right. Don't have anybody on the phone? Don't see any, so then we'll go ahead and then open the public hearing. All right. Public hearing is open. Any commenters on the phone?
No com, no callers.
Anyone in chambers wish to address item 44? All right. Seeing none, then close the public hearing and bring it back to the clerk to tabulate the ballot.
All right, we have one ballot. Just make sure here. Okay. The legal owner is TNT Investments LLC, a California limited liability company. Parcel number 066007005000. And the site address is Florin Road. And they are in favor of the annual charge.
Okay, that's a lot of zeros.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. With that, then, you've heard the ballots read. Cheyenne, bring it back to you then to put the proper numbers into the resolution.
Section two, at the close of the hearing, the board receives zero written protests.
Zero.
Section three, at the close of the tabulation, the board had received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of benefit category and 0% was in opposition.
Very good. Okay, it's been read into the record. And unless there's any questions by members of the board, the chair would move approval of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded then to approve the resolution. As read into the record, if there's nothing further, then Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Serna?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Very good. Very good. Thanks, Cheyenne.
All right. Item 45 is a presentation of resolution recognizing April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and Report on Activities of the Child Abuse Prevention Cabinet.
Okay, we're going to do the presentation first. I see both Sheila and Michelle coming down, so.
This is the national uniform?
Oh, is it?
We didn't.
Well, good morning, Sheila and Michelle.
Wear blue in April for child abuse prevention.
Very good, okay.
Well, it's my pleasure on behalf of the board supervisors to present both to the Child Abuse Prevention Center and certainly to our department and all the folks that Michelle represents with our Child and Family Adult Services Division, particularly as it relates to children in this case. And to recognize once again that April 2022 is the Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I know we're going to hear more about child safety forward and the work that's been certainly promulgated and that's ongoing to try to eliminate neglect and abuse in our community, a very ambitious goal by 2030. But it means saving lives. I know I saw some of the statistics you're going to go through and they're pretty, pretty startling to see those numbers, but also recognizing that the good work that's gone on this community for decades now has probably resulted in many lives being saved and avoided neglect situations. But there's more work to do. And I know that both of you and certainly the folks you work with, both professionals and certainly paraprofessionals and volunteers in our community who care about our youth, who want to see a better situation for children and families and work daily with that goal, certainly to intervene, but also to prevent. And I, again, want to commend you and your organizations, your leadership to both of you, and certainly those that you work with on a daily basis. So the resolution goes through with some other statistics, but just would note that we want, as a board, certainly as a county, we affirm our dedication to supporting the efforts of those who work every day to prevent abuse, to protect our children, and to support good parenting activities and encouraging folks in the community, whether it be parents or family members, or just generally members of the community, to seek support and to support efforts that our children can grow up in a healthy and thriving environment and hopefully that in the not-too-distant future, we're able to eliminate neglect and abuse in our community. So on behalf of the board and certainly in the county of Sacramento, have a framed resolution for both of you. And you probably got a good collection of these, Sheila, and I imagine Michelle. Again, we do this annually, but a very serious subject, but again, there's some good news to report and a lot of work to do. So I thank you so much to both of you and congratulations. And I guess you're going to tell us more about the ongoing effort, so.
Yes, ma'am. But before you go, just on behalf of all of us who have been doing this work, we recognize that this might be the last time that you get to participate in this. And so on behalf of all my colleagues, public and private, I want you to know that we really appreciate your steadfast, your steadfast support for child abuse prevention. And I well remember way back, a little over 20 years ago, with the first opening of the Family Resource Centers, you were right there and it was in your district. And so we appreciate that you've been with us and been supporting and, and really caring for the children and families in this community. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Sheila. It's been my honor. Thanks. Thank you so much.
Good morning, board members and Chair Natoli. Oh, thank you. I thought I touched something. Michelle Callejas, Director of Child, Family and Adult Services, and Sheila Boxley, Director, Executive Director of Child Abuse Prevention Center. And we're here to talk about the Sacramento County Prevention Cabinet. I'm going to open it up, tell you a little bit about the background, and then kick it to Sheila, and she will talk about the data that, that Chair Natoli referenced a little bit earlier. So really excited about the work. So just a little bit of background. Back in 2018, the Children's Committee of the County Welfare Directors Association held what was kind of its first really intentional discussion about child abuse prevention. As you know, child welfare is more of a reactive or responsive agency. We jump into action when we get calls about child abuse and neglect. And there has been an ongoing national dialogue about shifting the child welfare system, reforming it, to becoming more of a proactive system that invests in services supports upfront, further upstream, to strengthen families and promote protective factors in order to keep children and families together and keep them out of foster care. This led to a first-ever Child Abuse Prevention Summit down in San Diego in January of 2019. We were one of 20 counties selected. All 58 were invited to apply, I think like 36 or so applied, so we were one of 20. And primarily based on the level of leadership and cross-systems support we had down at the summit, as well as the investments locally that this board and our county executive's office has supported over the years. And I'll tell you a little bit more about the members in just a moment. Just as another reference, the CPS Oversight Committee several years ago had made a recommendation to this board to establish a new commission that would expand the focus of the child protective systems effort and really address child abuse prevention across the community, understanding that it is a, a community responsibility, collective accountability responsibility to address the safety, health and well-being of children and families. And this is the body that the Oversight Committee agreed, okay, this can serve as this body since we had already established it and it has the entities that the Oversight Committee suggested. Oh, I'm sorry, there's no, is the PowerPoint up? That's okay, I almost forwarded Supervisor Serna.
Hang on, Phil, she's going to forward you. Back to the future.
I'm not going to be on the big screen, am I?
That would be good. So shortly after the, the Prevention Cabinet started, we had a great opportunity to apply for a Department of Justice, U.S. Department of Justice grant called Child Safety Forward. And CAPSCI agreed to apply on behalf of the Prevention Cabinet with the full understanding that we would support and implement the strategic plan envisioned. The goal of the grant is to develop multidisciplinary strategies and approaches to address fatalities and near fatalities resulting from child abuse and neglect. Again, we were very fortunate to get selected. You can see we're only one of five jurisdictions and the only one west of Illinois. The other jurisdictions, so Cook, Cook County Health in Illinois was selected, the Indiana Department of Health, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and then a hospital in Hartford, Connecticut. And then we're also privileged to receive technical assistance from within our reach at the Alliance for Strong Families and Communities. So real quickly, this is the cabinet. And as you can see, we have 27 members, which we'll show the names shortly, across 19, from 19 agencies across eight different systems. What's, what's important to note is the, the systems involved around the circle. These are the same systems that the Oversight Committee had, had wanted to include. So mental health, education, law enforcement, a host of community-based providers. And most important is the middle circle of parent, youth and family voice. And that is what we are centering this approach on as we, as we move forward. We have a subcommittee that's called the Community Engagement Subcommittee, and we are currently onboarding parent partners and a youth partner to help us advance the work. So here are members of the team. You will recognize many names. As you can see, it is a lot of leadership from the different agencies and divisions across the county. We're fortunate to have Casey Family Programs at the, at the table as well. And then it goes on. We've got First Five Black Child Legacy Campaign, our Family Resource Representatives, Kaiser Permanente, UC Davis Medical Center, Office of Education. And then we also have some technical assistants. We're having an evaluation conducted by Applied Survey Research. We have Strategies, which is a statewide training organization on prevention, also providing technical assistance. And we have the State Office of Child Abuse Prevention. So it's a, a strong cabinet and with, with a lot of eagerness and excitement about moving this forward. So I am going to kick it to Sheila now.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Okay. You will see on this slide that we have a pretty audacious vision, that we want to eliminate child abuse and neglect fatalities and near fatalities by 2030. But I want you to know, there's good reason for that kind of audacious vision. Because what we know in California is that every minute in California, there is a report of child abuse and neglect. And in Sacramento County, in every month, there is a child who is a victim of child abuse and neglect, who either dies or is critically and permanently injured. So that gives us great reason to, to move forward with this collectively. And even if the humanitarian part of this were not there, there's also a fiscal issue with this. Because what we know is that Safe and Sound, a nonprofit in San Francisco, worked with Berkeley House School, Business School, to identify the real cost by category of child abuse and neglect. And for our state, that cost is $27 billion per year. But what they also did is they took each of the 58 counties and identified what the cost per county is. And if, if we had done this with sort of a poll for you to guess what it is, I'm going to imagine that you might not have guessed that it's $919 million. Almost $1 billion is the cost to Sacramento County every year. And to give you some context for that, with- And to give you some context for that, with those dollars, every child two and three years old in Sacramento County could be in quality preschool and still have money left over to send quite a few of them to college. So we want to change this so that the money is really going toward supporting families and children, as opposed to where it is going now. Okay. One of the things that we did for about a year, oh, maybe 15 months, was to really focus on data. And I am really glad to report that all the participating agencies and organizations were willing to be transparent and to share data, and not hide the bad things, but to put everything on the table so we could really be very thoughtful. I'm not going to tell you about all that data, but I'm going to just highlight a couple of things. What you can see here is that over a 10-year period, and we started two years ago, so we were looking at 2009 to 2018, all the data that we could collect, and we saw that during that time, 140 children either died or were seriously injured because of child abuse and neglect. So I will tell you that it was almost half and half between the deaths and critical injuries, just about. But they were, what we did find then, that is very important, that has been true for a long time, is that the youngest children in our community are the most at risk. And so 80% of the children who died or were seriously injured were between birth and five years of age. What we also know is that the perpetrators are largely the biological families. And unfortunately, the moms are the highest percentage of those. We also know that 63% of those children had some prior involvement at any level with child welfare. 61% of them had some contact with substance abuse programming. And 59% were getting public benefits. So that begins to tell us where some of the access points are of trying to reach families earlier. What we also looked at were some of the risk factors. And I want to be really clear, when we say there's a risk factor, we're not saying, oh, if there is one of those risk factors in a family, they're probably abusing their children. That's not the case. What we're looking at is the backward look of families who did enter and have children who died or were critically injured. And what we see is that there are some themes and some risk factors that we need to be attentive to. And that certainly includes some of the characteristics of children, like their age, like their child welfare history, and also a child welfare history for the parents when they were children, or another sibling in the family. We also see crime and drug history as being important risk factors to be looking at, as well as poverty. And we know that the stress on a family of being in deep poverty is huge. It has all kinds of consequences, from nutrition for the children to just simply having a place to live. And the research that we have seen most recently is that if there were to be a $1 change, for example, in the minimum wage, there would be a 10% decrease in neglect reports. And that's been proven in several jurisdictions. So we know the impact of poverty on these families. So then we look at the disproportionality. And again, as I just said, there is a disproportionality in terms of the age of the children. But there is also disproportionality that we've known for quite a while, about ethnic and racial disproportionality. And just as one of the examples, you will see that in the bright blue, African-American black children are 11% of our population. However, they are 40% of the children who die or are critically injured due to child abuse and neglect. And I want to stop there and say with kudos, particularly to you, Supervisor Serna, being a champion in this issue, there has been more work that's been done, and there have been some changes in this. So this is the 10-year period data that we're looking at, and we know there has been, there have been some successes. But we're not there. We're not close. We are very fortunate, because before we decided to do this work, and before there was a summit here in California, there was a commission to eliminate child abuse and neglect fatalities on a national level. And really, very prestigious people from research, from service providers, from foundations, from families and people with lived experience, came together and worked for over a year. And what they were looking at is how did the child welfare system evolve? What really is the child welfare system now? And what do we need to do to update it and to refresh it? And when they talked about the child welfare system, they weren't talking about CPS. They were talking about the whole system, because everyone has to be a part of that. You have to have public health. You have to have behavioral health. You have to have probation. You have to have the nonprofit sector. You have to have foundations, and you have to have strong leadership. And so they came up with three components that they said were critical to any state or county who really wanted to take this on and begin to look at how we could change the system and have impacts on children and families, and thereby the whole community. So first of all, they said, you got to look at data. Well, we've been looking at data now for almost two years. So right now, we're in good shape with that part of what they've suggested. They also wanted it to be multidisciplinary. Well, I think when you look at the chart that Michelle showed you, as well as the list of participants on the cabinet, you'll see that it pretty much covers every discipline or profession that would typically be engaged in any of this work. So that part is solid. And then they spoke to leadership and accountability. One of the things in forming the cabinet that we did is that it was a requirement that whoever sat at the table had to have enough authority over their own work that they could make decisions on the spot, that there wouldn't be red tape, they could offer up money, they could offer up data, whatever might be needed, and that we wouldn't have to slow the process down for it. And as Michelle said, we are really delighted that in addition to all those professions that we do have people with lived experience, who are not advisory members, they are full members of the Prevention Cabinet. So what have we been doing? Well, what we've been doing is coming up with four priority strategic areas that we know, based on the data and all that we've looked at and the research, that we really need to focus on. And these are in no particular order. That's not a priority order. These are simply the categories that we're working with. One being community, parent, and youth voice. I will have to admit that more than three decades ago, when I first started this work, we were a little bit more like thinking we were medical providers. So, okay, we're going to diagnose, we're going to assess, we're going to figure out what's wrong, and then we're going to fix you. Well, that obviously did not work and never would have worked. And so for now, many more decades, we've understood and really appreciated and looked to the guidance of those who have had lived experience in communities. They can tell us what would have been better, what they could have used if something had been different in the trajectory of their path. And so we are very pleased, and that's a very strong component of the cabinet. Secondly is racial equity. I think it virtually speaks for itself, but we know we have disproportionality. We know we've got to look at policies, we've got to look at systems. We've got to change the norms in terms of racial equity. And then there's trauma-informed systems. And when we in the cabinet are talking about that, we're talking about the whole span of what is needed in terms of trauma-informed care. So yes, a family who gets an investigation for child abuse and neglect is probably pretty traumatized when that happens. A child or a youth who gets removed from their home and goes to another home with people they haven't known, they're probably traumatized. But likewise, we know particularly those frontline people who are working to help with these families, whether it be social workers, public health nurses, home visitors, or any of the others, they are feeling and receiving the trauma that the families and the people they serve are going through. And most importantly, when there's a tragic death or injury of a child, that is very, very difficult for them. So we want that support all across the board. And then really building a system. And going back a little bit to the referral of where we know some kids come and some families show up, as we can start to build systems so that when a family or a child comes to the first initial time that we recognize them, when can we at that point, and how can we give them the supports and services they need, so they don't end up in yet another system? And that it just keeps going on and on, and in fact, becomes multi-generational. So all of those four strategies are just the overriding part of what we want to do. So the cabinet is very much engaged now, and we believe that by September, we will have a full report that we can come to you that provides, under each of those strategy areas, recommendations, possibly programs, system changes, different ways of communicating. And so we will hope that you will give us an opportunity at that time to come and present the whole plan. But what I want to be clear about is, we are talking about all the way to 2030. Everyone is committed to that. So the plan that you will see is the beginning. We hope it will evolve, and it will grow as we learn and as we make changes. And we look forward to that conversation with you. And with that, thank you. I know that this board has done a great deal in the past around prevention and supporting children and families. And we ask you to be leaders with us in this journey all the way through 2030, even if you're not sitting in that seat.
Still be around. I'll be supporting you.
Okay. And I want to do a shout-out to the Child Death Review Team, because after 25 years, all of that data, Sacramento is the only county in this state that has that wealth of data. And so that frankly is probably one of the reasons we got the DOJ grant, that we were poised and able to actually do the work. And I also have to say something about my colleague over here. When she said, well, you know, the County Welfare Directors Association decided to do X, Y, and Z, there were only 10 child welfare directors that made that decision, and she was one of those leading the pack. So I think that's important to also point out. So with that, thank you so much for your attention, and we will try to answer any questions that you have.
And before we do the questions, because I'd like to give you all data points. And so as you remember, we invested in a lot of prevention when we entered the title 4E waiver. So our latest data points, since that time, with the county executive's support and this board's support, we've maintained those investments, even though the waiver's gone, and we're deeply grateful. So since we started and implemented those programs in 2015, we've reduced repeat maltreatment of children by 27%. We've reduced the number of children in foster care by 39%. And we've reduced entries into foster care by 58%, which means more children and families are staying together, we're providing the services and supports they need to stay out of the child welfare system. Once a child sets foot in the child welfare system, as dedicated and committed as my staff are, the system is troubled, right? The system is not a perfect system. But they are more likely to have poorer outcomes, not graduate from college, from high school, much less go to college. I hear, you know, our priority of addressing homelessness on housed individuals, many of the adults on the street have spent time in foster care. So this can work. We appreciate this board's support.
Well, thank you, Michelle. Thanks, Sheila, both of you, certainly for the presentation this morning, for your ongoing leadership in so many ways. And again, as challenging as not only the topic is, but obviously what it means to people and their respective lives, and you know, and some of the things that bring sadness, I think there is a reason for hope. And I think what you've outlined here today is the ongoing work and the efforts to make a difference and, you know, again, break the cycle of abuse and neglect. And we're having, you know, some measured success at that, but it's ongoing work. And I think, again, having an audacious goal, that's a good thing. And I think, I look at that talented list of folks that are on the, on the one slide, again, that's even more reason to be hopeful. But again, thanks to both of you and all the folks that you partner with. So we do have a couple supervisors, Supervisor Desmond, and I don't know if Supervisor Serna on the phone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Sheila and Michelle, for the presentation. I very much appreciate it. And I also want to thank, you know, my fellow board members, because of, like you said, the investments made over the years by them preceding my tenure here, and, you know, certainly Supervisor Serna and the Black Child Legacy Campaign, and these great initiatives that have resulted in some progress that you talk about. And so I appreciate that. I want to ask you a question about, you know, you're going to have three additional fatalities to add for 2022 from the horrible murder on February 28th of three young girls by their father in Arden Arcade. And it occurs to me, we did a, you know, we did a community forum after that in Arden Arcade, and included a lot of stakeholders in the domestic violence world. But it occurs to me, you know, I should have reached out to you and had some representation by the cabinet there as well to talk about this, because of, you know, that intersection between domestic violence and child abuse, obviously. And I think a good thing from that forum was we identified some real good, I think, policy ideas, some things maybe we can do locally, and some things that we would need some help, I think, at the state level. But I'm curious, maybe could you talk a little bit about your kind of, I guess, interface with, I know WEVE is a member, has representation on the cabinet, obviously the DA's office as well. But can you talk a little bit about your work with folks involved in domestic violence prevention specifically, and, you know, how you work together in some of your combined efforts?
Yes. Okay. We'll give you some examples, I guess. Certainly working with the Nine Family Resource Centers and Birth and Beyond, they also do provide and work with each of the existing domestic violence organizations, because what we do see is that families who come in, particularly moms, who come in for parent education, and maybe diapers and so on, and maybe getting home visitation, will pretty often then indicate, well, I have this other problem, and it's domestic violence. So when you work with families, they don't necessarily, as we all know, come in and tell you everything and all the baggage that there is. It really requires a relationship and trust. And so when that trusted person in the Family Resource Center is working with them, and will go with them to get other services, including domestic violence, they're more likely to be successful. So that's one way.
Okay. Great.
Yeah. And I'll just add that part of the waiver funding that we sent to through CAPSCY, through all the Family Resource Centers, enabled them to add the domestic violence component at the Family Resource Centers. Additionally, our department contracts with WEVE and My Sister's House. WEVE provides ongoing groups so that to help parents address the domestic violence issues, preventing them from being with their kids. And I will say, we have more work to do. Our three risk factors remain substance use, domestic violence, and then mental health challenges. So yes, more work to do.
Thank you, Michelle. It just, it really occurred to me during the conversations after that horrible incident, and then certainly the community forum, that there are probably opportunities for notifications to be made for people at risk, whether that's a spouse or children in a home, whether that trigger is a domestic violence restraining order. And it sounds like, I mean, you're already having a lot of that interface, or maybe an arrest or interaction with law enforcement of an individual who is the subject of a domestic violence restraining order, you know? And there were certainly, I think, some red flags in this situation. And I look forward to having a, maybe at this point, or at some point in the future, this board having a discussion about some policy measures that we may be able to implement here and possibly advocate for at the state level. So I look forward to having that discussion with you and having you be a part of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Supervisor Desmond. Okay. Supervisor Frost.
I just wanted to congratulate you. Michelle and Sheila, I'm shocked at the success of your numbers in such a short time. I remember when we started down that path of maybe converting the foster care system, and I thought, oh, wow, that's going to be hard. And I think you've done so much in such a short time. I wanted to congratulate and thank you.
Great. Thank you, Supervisor Frost. Supervisor Serna, anything on the phone?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to thank Sheila and Michelle, and, you know, the cabinet for the work that they do. And I take to heart Sheila's earlier comment about... And I take to heart Sheila's earlier comment about acknowledging the progress that's been made, but certainly equally, if not more important, the work left to be done. So couldn't agree more with her. And, you know, I know that this county has taken some unique steps to address child abuse and neglect. And we've done that in some respects very targeted, in a targeted way. But as my colleague Supervisor Desmond pointed out, you know, we've had a very difficult start to 2022 and just underscores the fact that that work needs to be at the forefront of our consideration as a board when it comes to our discussions about resource allocation and budget. Not that, you know, money necessarily is going to be the solution here, but I think if we're going to, you know, make bold statements and be bold, I...
Did we lose the phone connection? Phil, are you still there? May have lost the phone.
Did you get, did you get most of that?
No, last thing I heard was be bold and that was it. And then you went quiet, so.
That's a good place to be.
Be bold.
Okay, all right. Did you want to state anything after that? Are you okay with, just tell us be bold?
Yeah, I was just, I was just making the case that I think, you know, when it comes time for our budget discussions and how we prioritize, you know, scarce resources, you know, we should be considerate of, you know, what this county has done in the past and what we seek to do in the future around eliminating child abuse and neglect. And that should be reflected in those priorities. So, you know, again, I appreciate the report, but it should stay fresh in our memories as we approach June. And it should be, again, at the forefront of all of our considerations, you know, whether or not we have one-time funding opportunities on occasion or not. I just think that we can't let this be kind of a rhetorical consideration. It has to be one that's met equally with the resources necessary to get us to success.
Okay. Thank you, Phil. Okay, Ann Edwards.
Yes, thank you, Chair Natoli. I just want to add that I have known and worked with both Michelle and Sheila for way too long.
A while.
A while. And I've never known two people who are more dedicated to the safety and well-being of children and families. And I think what they presented here today demonstrates that. So I just want to thank you both.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ann. So just to follow on, so when will we expect to see the strategic plan or the first draft of that? Will it be while I'm still sitting in this chair or will it be after?
It will be, we think, in September.
Okay.
Which could be...
Yeah, a little bit of...
You know, a little off, but that's the plan.
Okay, very good. So we'll look forward to hopefully see that late summer, early fall. Okay, before winter sets in.
Yes.
Very good. Okay. Again, kudos to all of you and certainly all the partners, many who obviously are, you know, committed just as you are and dedicated to the idea that we're going to have a safer, better community for all, but certainly for our children and their families. So with that, again, thanks for your good work. And I do want to note, one last note too, that Casey Foundation has been with us for some time over the years and have brought, you know, resources that have assisted us in, you know, in the efforts. And again, thanks to you and again, others who've worked to see to it that that, you know, has been a real conduit for, I think, helping us to exercise both thoughts, but also then translate that into actions that really do make a difference. So again, we've had partners certainly internally to our community. But I know the Casey Foundation, going back to some of the crises that we were involved in with tragic deaths and so forth, has been a part of this effort for many, many years. And so we thank them for their support because it's come with people as well as with financial support as well, if I recall correctly.
Right, and I'll pass that on. We probably get a good $700,000, $800,000 of technical assistance and guidance and direct consultants working with us. So they've been tremendous in helping us make positive changes.
Yeah, that's great underpinning for the leadership that we have here, obviously the two of you and others. So, well, again, thank you so much, Sheila. Thank you so much, Michelle.
Thank you.
And congratulations on another, you know, great effort here. Okay, with that then, we'll move to the last morning item, which is item number 46. So if you want to call that, ma'am clerk.
Yeah, item 46, approve additional project for housing and homeless projects in Phase One of the American Rescue Plan Act in the amount of $5,856,900 and approve staffing request in the amount of $2,315,697 to operationalize projects in the Department of Human Assistance.
Okay, very good. We want to see Emily here and I know Bruce and Ann have all been on the staff report along with Ethan, but I trust Emily, you're going to be making the presentation, so.
Yes, and Ethan is on the phone, should you have any specific questions for him, as well as Jeff Gassaway, because he's involved in one of the projects as well.
Very good.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Emily Howkin. I'm your Director of Homeless Initiatives. As you recall, in November of last year, the board prioritized your investments for the American Rescue Plan Act, or what we call ARPA, into three priority areas with housing and homelessness getting the bulk of the funds. $59 million of the original 150 million has been allocated to this priority area. And on January 11th, you approved $17.5 million to go to six projects. And then a little bit later in March, you allocated $5 million to go to the Mirasol Village Affordable Housing Project that is being overseen by SHRA. This morning, or I guess this afternoon now, I'm bringing to you four additional project recommendations totaling just under $6 million for your consideration. Should they be approved today, there will be in a balance of just over $27 million in the homeless and housing priority fund. And we are continuing to refine additional projects, focusing on some that create permanent housing opportunities as well as funds to expand service-enriched sheltering options. And I hope to have one or more of those in front of you very, very shortly. But I did want to quickly go through the four projects that are being recommended today and note that our partners from the Salvation Army, as well as Sacramento Steps Forward are here as well. They are helping us to implement two of the largest investments we're recommending today. First, we're asking for $150,000 to continue water delivery into encampments through the end of June. This was a community service that we really began as a response to the COVID pandemic in 2021 or 2020. And we are recommending to continue through June while staff is assessing the ongoing needs in a post-pandemic world. Eventually, we recommend that this service, sanitation and water delivery into encampments, become a part of our broader encampment service team. But to ensure there's no disruption of service while we're doing that work, we're asking for that $150,000 for DHS to continue this uninterrupted through June. The second request is also something that I think you're familiar with already. We are requesting just under $250,000 to pay for a master plan for the Mather Community Campus. This is being overseen by the Department of General Services, along with DHA and my office. This master plan is already underway and we hope to have some initial information to share with you early summer. And this analysis is going to be looking at the physical buildings on the campus, the useful life of those buildings, and make some recommendations on either repairing or replacement of those buildings so that we can continue to provide critical homeless sheltering and housing services on the Mather Community Campus. The third item is just about $2.5 million for sheltering and associated services and 60 beds at the Salvation Army Center of Hope, which is located just up the street in the River District. This is an investment that will specifically support our efforts to move people out of the American River Parkway, out of unsheltered homelessness, into a sheltering opportunity with enriched services and out of homelessness into permanent housing. These beds will be, if you approve today, these beds will be available to start receiving clients starting on May 1st. And we are requesting funds to continue those beds through the end of 2024. The priority for these beds will be for folks living unsheltered in the American River Parkway between I-5 and the 160 Highway, those who are most close to the, not only the Center of Hope, but within the River District. And the access will be coordinated through the Parkway Navigation Teams, which you funded as part of this year's fiscal budget.
Emily, if I could have you pause. Supervisor Desmond had a question.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Emily. I'm very excited to see these proposals here today. On this one, the sheltering supports, which I'm obviously in support of, I see the ARPA funding is about $2.5 million. Can you break down, I mean, how much is that going to be for the capital cost versus operations?
Right.
And how are we going to handle operations beyond the ARPA allocation?
Sure. So the Salvation Army has a per-bed-per-night rate, which encompasses their entire costs. Their cost to operate the shelter itself, you know, any capital or any ongoing maintenance of the building. They own the building outright, as well as the services. This includes meals, laundry, onsite staffing, have onsite staffing 24/7. They do some light case, they do some case management, sort of daily work with the clients there. So it's all bundled into there. They could probably provide more specifics about how that rate is untangled, but we pay effectively $42 a bed a night. And they then provide the array of services. We will, we do anticipate overlaying with that additional services, knowing the intense needs of these folks. So our encampment services teams will not just be doing a passive referral in, they'll stay engaged with folks to connect them to deeper services. And as Siobhan sort of foreshadowed in our earlier conversation, I think that in the conversations coming up in the next few weeks, some of the on-the-ground service connections to her world, to behavioral health and substance abuse treatment. Currently, we have sort of roving access clinicians who are within all of our shelters. There's not enough of them. And so as we hopefully increase the number of those, their presence within this shelter as well, all the shelters in our community will be increased. And so the Salvation Army staff will sort of be our 24/7 eyes on the ground, but we'll also be bringing in behavioral health staff for some of those clients who have higher needs.
Right. You know, I actually appreciate you describing that because I think that's a good description of the kind of services we will be providing in other shelters as well.
Right.
I mean, connecting folks with the services they need. But this, so this money would have to be spent by 2026. So I just, beyond 2026 for this first tranche, how much will it cost us to continue with this shelter? I guess that's my question. I mean...
Right. So if we've asked for the funds through the end of 2024 because of the contracting requirements with ARPA, should we want to extend that? It would, you know, the rates may change. I do want to recognize there's cost of living adjustments for Salvation Army, but that would need to be a growth above and beyond what we can fund from ARPA.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Yeah. And then the fourth item, which we're recommending, is $3 million to support enhancements to our community's coordinated access system, which is managed here locally by Sacramento Steps Forward. Coordinated access is currently, serves primarily as our community's front door into permanent housing opportunities for folks experiencing homelessness. And the enhancements that we are currently actually already working with SSF, as well as our city partners, will expand this front door to also include sheltering options, as well as some other temporary types of facilities. This is definitely a hugely needed asset in our community. We want to make sure that every shelter bed in our system is fully utilized and that people throughout the county have access to those. But just as critical is sort of the next step in this process, which is ensuring that an entry point into a shelter also is a facilitated exit from homelessness. So this is step one, in which what will end up being a much bigger project, where we also work on the back door out of our homeless system of care. So that when you get into a shelter, you can be, you can feel confident that the services and supports and funding will be there to help you exit from that shelter into permanent housing. Thinking also back to the conversation earlier about how that overlays with some of the behavioral health work that Siobhan talked about. Certainly, we know that folks who have behavioral health needs, who are in a shelter and connected to these services that we offer, as well as our partner providers offer, is a better place to engage them. And so even though coordinated access will not be able to find a bed for treatment, knowing where they are and knowing that they're surrounded by a shelter operator who can make that direct referral into the county system, or that the person answering the phone at 211 also knows and looks for those referral needs, it's more touchpoints to a person in crisis who can hopefully connect them to the system that Siobhan and her team are building up.
Go ahead, Supervisor Desmond.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm going to interrupt. Thanks, Mr. Chair. No, I really, I'm very excited to see this proposal as well. And I know that Lisa Bates from Sacramento Steps Forward is here. And I want to flesh it out a little bit, what you just described, because I think, and I appreciate the staff report, you know, making it simple so even someone like me can understand it. Because I know I ask a lot of, you know, dumb questions up here as I try to figure out something that is a very complex system. And I think that, you know, I was asking our county execs some questions yesterday during briefing because, you know, and I think it was important to have Lisa here and maybe at the very least, you know, say a few words. But I think along the lines of a discussion we have a lot of times at this diocese, that the county does not do a very good job of explaining what we're doing, what our role is, what resources we provide in terms of addressing the homelessness crisis. And I think sometimes that's born out of maybe a kind of a solidarity here at the county. We just, we kind of just get the job done. We don't talk about, we don't maybe, you know, trumpet some of the things that we do as much as we should. But I think in terms of the, and I love how you've talked about the back door, because I think it's important for the public to understand that we are, you know, we're trying to, both us in partnership with the City of Sacramento, trying to move heaven and earth to get more capacity online so we can get folks out of immediate harm's way on the streets. But that's only, you know, that's only a very first step. The next step is to connect folks with the services that you're describing and then get them in, out the back door into a more permanent housing solution and with the treatment they need for their addiction and mental illness and whatever supports they need. And so appreciate you putting that in here. I think a lot of times, just in my mind, I think of, and maybe correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm not considering this the right way, but coordinated access or coordinated entry, I think it's, those are synonymous terms really. I mean, we're, that's more about the housing. But I think on the behavioral health side, we are, the county is its own coordinated entry entity, right? To help people get into the behavioral health treatment they need. So one, a question I had in my discussions with Ann yesterday is can we talk a little bit about that? How do you integrate, how does that behavioral health coordination, coordinated entry integrate with the housing Sacramento Steps Forward coordinated entry? And, I mean, you said a few things which are helpful. I don't know if you have anything else maybe to add, to flesh that out a little bit? So because I, and it's not just to help me understand, which you'll be doing as long as I'm on this board, but I think to help the public understand as well.
Right. No, I appreciate that. It is important. And on the housing, the crisis response is a little bit different. But on the housing side, the county certainly is the funder of a lot of permanent supportive housing units that are set aside for folks with serious mental illness. And you are right, the front door really is the mental health system because you have to have a diagnosis to get into those units. They also serve folks who are experiencing homelessness. And so there is a lot of work going on. We do have some of our units already in coordinated entry and we're working really hard to get more of them in there.
Some of our behavioral health units actually?
Permanent supportive housing units.
Oh, right, right, right.
So these are permanent supportive housing units that are built for, built or operated for folks experiencing homelessness, not treatment necessarily. And so we are working really hard to make sure that we're not creating a duplicative system of care. The challenge is, is that you have to have a diagnosis and obviously coordinated entry is not doing diagnoses and you also have to be homeless. And so there's a lot of work going on. Lisa might be able to speak a little bit more as to where we're at in that process. But we as a county have committed to ensure, to the extent possible, that we're not, you know, bypassing clinical diagnoses, that the permanent supportive housing that we have funded for folks experiencing homelessness and that it's, that is operated through the mental health system is as to the extent possible in the coordinated entry system.
And in, oh, I don't know if you're...
If I could just add too, and Siobhan spoke to this earlier, that the coordinated entry, if you will, for behavioral health is their mental health access team.
Right.
And Siobhan talked about the need to maybe expand that a bit, but that is how you gain entry into the mental health system.
So we have, I mean, and as Siobhan mentioned, this RAN study will be identifying where the gaps are in our behavioral health system in terms of both outpatient but residential treatment facilities, beds, a lot of which serve the unhoused, right? And so that's kind of our own county coordinated entry, getting someone into a bed on the behavioral health side. In addition to that, as they are going through the coordinated access system overseen by Sacramento Steps Forward, we were constantly involved with doing the evaluations and maybe that referral may be, like you said, in a permanent supportive housing situation. It may be another outpatient treatment program that we get them into. And I imagine there may be times where someone, we realize, hey, this person's in crisis, we need to get them into a residential, maybe a subacute or acute bed for behavioral health. This is great. And obviously... And obviously, the challenge is for all of us getting more capacity online, so we can, we can provide treatment on demand and shelter on demand for those who need it, obviously. I think the other, the other question I had, and I don't know if maybe this is more for Lisa, and I don't know if Lisa, if you had any, you know, remarks that you were going to, you were going to prepare, but I'd like to have a little bit better understanding about how Sacramento Steps Forward kind of brings, you know, the city and county together, how you work with both entities to provide this coordination, but then also, how you work with some of the community-based organizations that I know have their own inventory of maybe housing or shelter opportunities? And are they included as part of this larger coordinated access system?
You want? Sure.
Yeah. Do you mind, Mr. Chair?
That's fine. Standby, Emily, go ahead. You know, Lee, come on, Lisa.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond, Chair Minatoli. Appreciate the opportunity to be partnering with you on this very important endeavor. In answer to your question, there's kind of two or three primary ways that we are working across jurisdictions. One is through the continuum of care, which is now a 30-member body that is the entity that really advises the community on our homeless response system. And sitting on that board, our representation from the county, Emily sits on it, as well as previously, Siobhan, and now, one of her staff members, Janine. We have representation from each of the cities, with the exception of Galt and Folsom. And we have representation from our community-based organizations, our health providers. And so, that forum is really looking at strategic direction for our homeless response system, is also making recommendations on a local homelessness action plan that'll be coming forward before your body, as well as the City Council of Sacramento in June. The second way that we are really setting the table is through the Sacramento Homelessness Policy Council, of which you and Supervisor Kennedy are a member of. And that is an elected leadership forum of cities and the county that meet three times a year to discuss strategy and policy around homeless response at a system level. And so, that work is very important and helps inform, I think, all of us in terms of the direction that we need to go as a community. I'll also say that we work collaboratively with all of your staff at the respective cities and the county on a monthly basis in a funder's collaborative. And that is where we do a lot of the thinking through policies and initiatives, such as the coordinated access proposal that's before you today. So, we commit to meeting weekly, to work out all of the issues that we need to, so that it is a system that works for everyone, as well as the major administrators of resources, such as the county and the City of Sacramento.
Great, thank you, Lisa. And then, maybe, could you describe, because I'm aware, you know, it seems like I come across a lot, a lot of nonprofits who, again, run their own kind of programs, that maybe are independent, you know, they don't get, they may not even get any public funding. In terms of the, I guess, the capacity across the continuum, that Sacramento Steps Forward through the coordinated entry system, that you're able to place people in, are they part of that, or are they kind of separate and distinct? Can you explain that relationship, how you roll them in to make sure that we are coordinating access to all of the capacity that's out there potentially? You know, understanding that some of these, you know, nonprofit organizations may want to do their own thing, but can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. Community-based organizations, about 95% of our homeless response system uses the HMIS system, the Homeless Management Information System, which is where we collect data about people experiencing homelessness and how they're being served. And so, all those community-based organizations, which I think there's about 60-plus right now, are able to access that coordinated referral process and access system that we're talking to. So, we're able to interact with them and make referrals, as well as they are able to make referrals to other, to other programs in the system as well. So, as we build out coordinated access using 211, my anticipation is that probably that community-based organization pool will grow, and we will have more resources to be able to refer into. But we have a good, solid base right now that we're working with, many of which are funded either by the county or the City of Sacramento, or through SSF.
Okay, great. And so, I imagine if I maybe come across an organization that might not be participating in HMIS, we would strongly encourage them to come into that system, right? So, we are all coordinating.
Yes, and part of what you're funding today is for us to build up that capacity to help community-based organizations become more a part of the overall system through HMIS.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Supervisor Desmond. Emily?
Well, the final thing I was going to note about the board letter is that today's recommendation also includes requests for administrative staffing within the Department of Human Assistance. I did want to note, these are coming out of the admin component of ARPA, not from the homeless and housing bucket. The staff that are being requested will provide the operational and fiscal support for the projects, both that you approved in January, as well as a couple that you are considering today. And with that, I was, I'm available for questions. In addition to Lisa, our friends from the Salvation Army are here. Ethan and Jeff Gasaway are both on the phone, if you have questions for any of us.
Great, thanks, Emily. I'm going to, Supervisor Serna, anything on the phone first?
Nothing at the moment, thank you.
Okay, good. Emily, I wanted to bring us back to the discussion about Mather Community Campus, and I want to stress a little bit of the urgency. I think that doing the master plan makes sense, and certainly, I've talked with Ann and with Jeff and with others. But again, I see a facility that I'm very familiar with that's aged. It doesn't serve as many folks as we certainly have allowed ourselves the opportunities over the years to serve. We serve, I don't know, 25 families, and we have, if we had the capacity out there, we could serve 60 families, depending upon the size of family and facility needs and so forth. And I'm very anxious, certainly while we have ARPA funding available to us, and whatever we decide about the existing buildings and/or new construction, I guess I see the opportunity, I've said this, probably sound like a broken record to some of the folks in the room here, maybe some modular units, maybe some tiny housing, that again, would fit programmatically, would have the services, looking at transitional, not just off the street into the shelter situation. But if we've got log jams in our whole continuum of care, transitional is important. And again, we have programs out there that already, and we're, you know, we've got a variety of program providers, certainly, Nextmove being the primary. We've got Transitional Age Youth across the street, the Adolpho Program, we have families and single persons, we have veterans. We have a campus of 30 acres. And again, I want to see us have a master plan, but I also think, certainly during my remaining tenure on this board, I could be of assistance in working with staff, with our partners in the City of Ranch Cordova, and to try to help us stand up some things that would give us, even if it's a few more units of capacity. And so, I'm anxious to see the master plan, I guess the target is by summer, but before ARPA monies are exhausted, and before we've gone elsewhere with the dollar resources, again, I want to say one more time for the record, I think we have the ability to do some things on that campus, do it correctly, make sense out of it all, and have the program to support it. But if we're looking for capacity, and I know we are, because again, we've tasked you all with doing that, and you're looking at the, again, the whole spectrum of everything from permanent supportive housing to folks that are unsheltered and looking to get a roof for them with some services behind that. And so, I'm, you know, again, I'm, my expectation is, is that we will see by early summer, that's me saying it, that's not what's been promised here. Some semblance of a master plan will leave, give us a guidance relative to what long-term we might do with the facilities that are there, and anything that might be new construction that's going to be on order of magnitude of millions and millions of dollars, I'm sure. But what we can do with the existing campus to maybe accommodate a few more families, a few more single persons, again, they recognizing the limitations that, you know, that exist because of the physical facility. But there's also opportunities out there, and I just don't think we've, you know, approached it in a way that would get us some immediate relief, but also recognize, you know, whatever impacts might come of that, and the ability to provide the service. And so, when I think that we could do 60 families, again, the board has authorized that going back 20-plus years ago, we provide now 25 families because of physical limitations in the plant, but maybe with programmatic support as well. And I know we've got women and children, families that are in need of, you know, again, if it's not immediate shelter, certainly some transition, so they can get their feet underneath them and get back out there. So, again, I'm very anxious, and I want to stress that, to see us get back with that. I know Ann and I have talked, I've talked to Bruce, I've talked to Emily at different times. And I think there's some, you know, with ARPA funding, before ARPA funding is exhausted, I'm going to make that point, I'd like to see some, you know, opportunity to do some things out there at the campus. And again, the master plan will guide this county for many years to come. We have a great program and different elements out there, and we serve a lot of people. And again, to your point, Supervisor Desmond, we don't talk about that too much, but there's a lot of folks that have come through programs out there that, you know, certainly are back in the mainstream of our community and its daily life, and I just would like to see us really advance that. I know Jeff certainly is in charge of, you know, guiding the master planning piece of it, but I would like to see the service component, and what we might do in some more short-term, and then recognizing the long-term, that that campus is going to be an asset for this community for generations, I count my trust. So, I just wanted to point that out. But I'm, you know, supportive of the efforts here, and again, I know it reflects a lot of different work. I think the staff support behind it, to make sure we guide these programs correctly, is important, and certainly, the drinking water piece is critically important. We saw a glimpse of summer last week, and we've seen a glimpse of the tail end of winter here in the last couple of days, but nonetheless, the elements are harsh, and I think anything we can do to certainly alleviate some of the challenges folks have on a daily basis is important, so the water obviously provides that. So, any other member of the board, if not, I do have a speaker on this, so. Okay, all right. Dan Aderhal, Dan, come forward.
We do have someone on the phone.
On the phone?
Yep. And I think, I thought we had one person in chambers, too.
We do. Dan's coming up. Come on, Dan, you're first, and then we'll get the person on the phone. Good to see you back. You were here in the morning, you're here in the afternoon.
Well, now, I'm glad to stay, you guys, because I'd like to tell you something. Nobody, no nonprofit organization or anybody else on American River Parkway is there but my American River Homeless Crew. That is ground zero where we first started, is what they're talking about, I-5 to 16th Street, 1 Highway 160. That's where we began, that's where we started cleaning the whole American River, and we did that. We cleaned the whole Parkway, and we've been keeping it clean, cleaned up for a long time. The problem is, park recreation is not coming out picking up trash on a regular basis, okay? We're stacking the trash bags along the Parkway, like we're supposed to be doing, where they come pick it up. We've got people coming along, we call them treasure hunters, they just open the bags and scatter them to the wind, we all know this, okay? Thing that makes me upset right now is that my crew members will not go to no shelter. I get mad props to the Salvation Army, though, because they're out there trying to help people, but I'm telling you, that's not going to happen on American River Parkway. Nobody will go. My crew members have been through this shelter process before, and they always been kicked to the curb, railroad shelter, all this stuff, they trusted shelters, and they got kicked to the curb. They're not going to trust you guys, again, with shelters. I'm just telling you this right now, and I'm not going to tell my crews to go to no shelter. What we need to do is work together, keep our communities clean and safe, and make our, until there's affordable housing available. That's what we need in Sacramento, is affordable housing, you guys. Shelter's not the way. Shelter's just putting a Band-Aid on a problem. Yes, Salvation Army, I'm totally thankful for what they do, yes, they're out there helping best they can, but I'm telling you, help the people in inner city, help the people that stay at City Hall, help the people that are danger to the elements out there. My crew on American River Parkway are not in danger, they watch over each other like a family. Matter of fact, 73, about 78% are fellow veterans, and we're here trying to live in peace out here. I've been doing this with them for 10 years, every day, you guys, and I'm just really appalled what I just heard, because that really upsets me, because you know, you've been here for a long time, Don, Ms. Frost, you know that my American River Homeless Crews have been loyal to you guys, we now they're cleaning every day, helping you guys keep your guys' community clean, saving you guys millions and millions of dollars of cleanup jobs, and they're doing it because they love and care for the community. They're not paid a promise to anything. And basically, what I'm saying is that we don't want this to happen right now, but they're, they're, they're trying to say they want done. We're against, we're ready to protest, I've got over 1,000 people in my crews, we're ready to protest when we have to. I hope it don't come to that, but we're ready, because we already heard about this accusation they've made in the newspaper in Sacramento Bee, about how they want to make the forest a home of South American River. I take that as a personal insult, because we're the ones out there cleaning every day, trying to keep us clean and safe, and my crews are very loving, caring people, they're not criminals. Matter of fact, most of my crews work. They're working, but they can't afford the first, last, and deposit of rent, you guys. Let's be realistic, rent here is high. Most people can't afford affordable housing, that's why I'm saying the main problem to any homelessness, we need affordable housing and Section 8 to help get these people off the streets, okay? The rest of your program, you guys, go for it, man, but the American River Parkway, I'm telling you right now, it's not going to work. I'm being honest with you guys, they, they want affordable homes, they want to be able to get off the streets, but at the same time, a shelter they will not go to. It separates families, for one, and their dogs, they're families, too, you know? You're not, you're not curing a problem, you're making a more problem by this situation. What we need is to work together and keep our communities clean and safe till affordable housing is built, and that's what I'm saying, you guys, we need to keep doing this. We've been doing this for a long time, Don.
I'm not.
So, we've been doing this for a long time, let's just keep up the great work we're doing, and stop trying to attack where it doesn't even attack that, you know what I mean, where we all work together. There's no crime over there. I'm sick tired of the crime, talk, because there's no crime on my American River Homeless Crew, and they're not drug addicts. My crew, most of my crew don't do drugs, period, but you want to talk about drink? Okay, everybody drinks, most of them. My crew don't not do drugs, I guarantee that, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dan, thanks for what you do out there. Okay, that was the only person I had signed up in chambers to speak, thank you, Dan. We do have someone on the phone, you said, Ma'am Clerk?
We do.
Okay, so let's take our phone caller.
All right, could you transfer the caller, please? We have about three callers.
Okay, we have three callers.
Hi, caller, please start with your comments, you have three minutes. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, go ahead and start with your comments, you have three minutes.
Great, thank you. Hello, my name is Erin Johansson, and I am the CEO of Hope Cooperative and this year's COC Chair. Chair of the Board and Supervisors, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I want to just endorse the coordinated access proposal that you have in front of you. This is a truly transformative idea that we have not ever embarked on here in Sacramento. And I've been both a provider and a member of the COC Board for many years, and have been continuously frustrated with how difficult it is to navigate the system that we have created. And this will change things, this will be truly collaborative, an effort for the cities and the county and all of the stakeholders to participate in one system that is going to not only be easier for people experiencing homelessness to navigate, but also the providers that serve them, and it will also make the system increasingly more efficient. So, I really ask you today to consider supporting this plan. I'm really excited about it, more so than I have been about anything we have tried to do in the many years that, that we've been trying to battle this homeless crisis that we have. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you, Erin, thanks for your leadership as well. Okay, next caller.
Thank you.
Hi, caller, please start with your comments, you have three minutes.
Oh, sure, thanks. Good morning, afternoon, Board, this is Nikki, I'm at the Sacramento Homeless Organizing Committee, and I am concerned, like Dan, about point number three. I really am concerned about what it means to prioritize people on the Parkway, because historically, when you prioritize access for a certain area, it, and y'all have been pretty clear about, and we know this intention to clear encampments in that area. I can't speak enough about the importance of services being non-coercive, of services being voluntary. I think we all can place a lot of value in choosing, having a say in what services we engage with, and how, you know, Dan mentioned breach of trust with the shelter system, longstanding, and that remains to be a problem, not just that, but COVID concerns remain a problem in congregate settings, and so, I just really, you know, this will be a coercive offer, is my understanding, that it'll be tied to the removal of encampments, and we really need to help strategize survival and safety and sanitation for people. We really need to go in that direction, and not in the direction of coercive service delivery, which truly is not addressing the root of the problem. And I want to remind folks who may feel, and we all should, tied to the Parkway, that none of us own it, and that humans have been living on it for long before Sacramento existed and civilization came this way. And so, our ownership needs to be tied to a stewardship and to... came this way, and so our ownership needs to be tied to a stewardship and to longstanding support for long-term housing for people if they so choose, but this idea of a shelter or a tent on the ground somewhere as an alternative option is just not gonna fly, it's not gonna fly with people, and it doesn't fly legally, and we really hope that you'll, yeah, consider, you know, not doing this, like Dan said, I mean, people are ready to protest for their right to choose, you know, bodily autonomy is important to everybody, and y'all would do better to spend this $2.5 million on really enhancing the services you have for people in the encampments, because it is that much of an emergency, $150,000 is a drop in the bucket, reaches 10 encampments, we know there's so many more, more than 10 encampments on the Parkway, so we're not even dropping a bucket in terms of what we're reaching, and I also didn't see it mention the sanitation sites, the actual porta-potties, and I, you know, that's another component, and I'm wondering if that's included in the funding, and what's the timeline on that? Because we need long-term solutions for people as they wait for real solutions to come forward, because we can't start with enforcement, we have to start with a real solution.
Okay, all right, thank you, Nikki. Okay, Bettis, okay, next caller.
Thank you, all right, next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have three minutes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, go ahead and start with your comments, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, this is Mike Jaskey, you all know me from previous comments to the Board. I am a member or resident of Supervisor Desmond's District III. I support all four of the projects that are before you in Agenda Item 46. I particularly like the comments that Erin Johansson made about the fourth of these projects, the coordinated access. All of her comments are very germane and recommend you take them to heart. In particular, I appreciate the three-year commitment that you're making with qualifications to coordinated access, because this is clearly where we want to go over the long run, and rather than just a one-year commitment like some other local jurisdictions, I think a signal that this is something the county supports for the long term is important, and I appreciate it. Our homeless system, our behavioral health system, other elements of how we try to assist people who are in trouble and who have needs are poorly coordinated. Everyone tells you that, Commissioner, Supervisor Desmond outlined a number of those features in his questions and in the responses he received. We desperately need more system-level thinking about how to make our various subsystems, if you wanna think of them that way, more coordinated, more seamless, less burden on the client, the person who needs our help, who in many cases is not really capable of exercising the judgment that ordinary citizens are expected to do in navigating government services. So to wrap up, appreciate your efforts and your decision of supporting this agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, thanks for your ongoing advocacy as well.
And that concludes your public comments, and I'm gonna close the public comments now.
Okay, all right, very good, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the Board, Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I want, first, I want to thank the callers and thank you, you know, Dan, and I just want to shout out, you know, thank you for your work you're doing. I know you and your crews are doing terrific work out on the Parkway. I also, you know, I know that the Board's gonna be getting a presentation, I believe, the 26th, to talk about capacities, shelter capacity, and capacity along the, I say capacity, I mean that term broadly to include everything from, you know, low-barrier shelters all the way through permanent supportive housing, right? And when I think about it, I think about it also in terms of our behavioral health capacity, that also serves unhoused members of our community, and I think an important part of that discussion will be, Emily, you know, we've had a lot of discussions about what we have learned from congregate shelter situations and the damage that causes to so many people, and how that is an impediment to getting folks to come into a shelter because of the terrible environment at times in these old shelter models, and that's not what we're considering most of the time, and you and I have had a lot of these discussions, you know, the county, and even Supervisor Natoli alluded, you know, looking at a master plan at Mather, I mean, would we have modular homes, would we have safe sleeping cabins? I mean, I know the preference now is to look more at a non-congregate shelter model, so I mean, I don't have, but I'm hoping that we'll have part of that in part of our discussion on the 26th, to include, you know, what we're envisioning for these different models, is that correct?
Yeah, I definitely think that is, that will be part of the conversation, just, you know, and I do hear what the callers and the gentlemen in the chambers were talking about, and, you know, it's sort of a balance, because Salvation Army is an existing asset in our community that we cannot see disappear. I mean, it is congregate, and however, Salvation Army has been a great partner in working with us through COVID to address some of those needs, to enhance services, and certainly it's not for everybody, nobody will be coerced into going in here, people have choices, they can choose yes, they can choose no, and they can change their mind from day to day, so I want to be clear that that is not, we need a variety of shelters, and so this may not be for everybody, and so we need to put this in the place of our broader shelter system, and so I hope that can be a part of the conversation on the 26th.
Great, I appreciate that, and it's not, and it's not just looking at the different models, it's looking at how we operate them, it's looking at ensuring we have the appropriate services there, and I know that this is all part of the coordination discussion, too, is making sure we are able to get folks placed into that front door that is appropriate for them, and I really look forward to the discussion on the 26th, because this idea of coordination is important, and I really appreciate Erin Johansson's comments, and we went out to Haven for Hope together, and one of the biggest takeaways from all of us at that Haven for Hope trip was the coordination. I mean, the coordination was such a huge key, but it's only one, it's only one aspect of this, of this challenge. I mean, if we don't have the capacity, both the front door and the back door capacity, and the resources or the supports and services capacity, then we're, you know, we're dead in the water, so I know we're gonna keep working towards those things. But, so with that, I just want to say, you know, I'm very supportive of these, obviously also very supportive of the Chair's comments about the master plan at Mather and maximizing maybe some of our opportunities there, and so if it's appropriate, I'd like to move approval of this item.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. Yeah, we have a motion by Desmond, second by Serna. Before we take a vote, I just wanted to ask, based upon some of the testimony we heard, that if we have, you know, folks who are camped on the Parkway but actually working, working poor, and they've had bad experiences in the shelter system, and to what, you know, Dan pointed out, is some of the experiences of folks that he works with on a daily basis, do we have the capacity within our teams then to look at what people's ability to pay is, obviously, we, you know, again, whether they're ready for permanent housing, I mean, that was Dan's comment just a moment ago, but we do some assessment of that, working with the party, because I don't disagree that, you know, having a system, you know, a system-wise approach, where shelter entry may be the point of entry for some folks versus other folks who might very well be ready for a more permanent housing situation, because they have a job, but they may have pets, they may have a partner, possessions, things that we all know about, and, you know, I'll take the comments to be sincere, that folks are interested, means this team would be, your team would shrink in size, potentially, but if folks took that, the housing, and it was a sustainable situation, how do we approach that, Emily? I'm just curious, because, you know, I get it, that, you know, folks may have been in and out of the system, and they give up their pet, they give up their campsite, and then they ended up, a few days later, they're back in the same situation, and they're rebuilding their, you know, their domicile, so to speak, in the Parkway or elsewhere. So are we prepared to do that, or is the system still so short of housing opportunities that you go out there and folks say, well, I don't want, you know, no digging on the Salvation Army, just for example, but I don't want to go Salvation Army, but, you know, given the opportunity, I'm working, I'm staying sober, I think I could handle this, maybe a transitional situation and/or more permanent situation. Do we have capacity, are we still way behind the curve there, too?
Right, well, two things on that, I think, the first thing is, is what we talked about, coordinated access will help address that, not everybody has to go into shelter to access housing, that should never be the case, and certainly, there's lots of people for really good reasons either don't want to or can't, and so as we have more navigators, you guys funded 10 new navigators, which Ethan's team is getting up and running shortly, all of them will be required to enter into HMIS, what Lisa talked about, so they will all be in that queue for permanent housing, whether it be subsidized or unsubsidized. The second thing is, is, you know, to Dan's point, a lot of folks may have the ability to, with a little bit of support, permanently house themselves, and so the other investment that you made in January, the $10 million for the flexible housing pool and landlord engagement, is intended to be agnostic to where you enter the system, so working with community groups like Dan's group, if they know somebody and we have this flexible, you know, we can pay a deposit and four months of rent and help them gain their feet, that program, we are, I'm working really hard to get off the ground, I'm hoping to have it, you know, running this fall, and one of the key points for that is how we connect to both the formal system of care, so like Lisa, but also the informal systems who are working with folks in encampments, so we don't have enough capacity for everybody who wants housing today, because I would bet everybody wants housing, but we are working really hard to increase that capacity.
No, I appreciate the last point, because I, if not recall, just you just said a moment ago that we had actually given, you know, the ability to do what you just stated, and I think, you know, coercing versus coaxing or encouraging in a way that, again, allows the opportunity for folks to, you know, make some of those choices, but also there's a framework for those choices, and there's a point of entry, some understanding about what's available, understanding of the individual situation, and then trying to make that match in a way that, you know, hopefully will be sustainable over time, so, okay. Well, anyway, I appreciate the explanation, thank everyone for their comments, we do have a motion and a second, and nothing further. Oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Frost, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to ask a quick question, I don't know if it would be from you, Emily, or Lisa, I did have a question from the Hart in Sacramento that covers Sacramento and North Highlands and Rio Grande, Alberta antelope, and they were wishing they had a navigator, who do they call? Do they call the county, or do they call Sac City? Their meetings are in Sac City proper, but most of their area that they cover is the unincorporated in my district, and so they were asking if I could advocate on behalf of them to get a navigator.
And do they mean they want like an ongoing navigator assigned to that district, or are they looking for it for like a single sort of touch day, or both?
I think they would like services, navigator services, like the other, like the other Harts do.
Sure, so right now, we don't have a lot of geographically assigned navigators. One of the things, though, included in the coordinated access proposal that SSF has put forward, does expand, they're not navigators, because they're not proactively going out and sort of finding people, I can't remember the title that you gave them, but, the staffing title, but for folks who are disconnected from a navigator and may call through 211, there will be staff available to do follow-up with them, it's slightly different than what the Hart's asking for. If the Hart is looking for something more traditional, like we want somebody to deploy five days a week in this geography, that's probably something they need to lift up through your office to either me or Ethan, I think.
Okay, we'll work on it, thank you.
Okay, thanks Supervisor Frost, okay, no further questions or comments, and Madam Clerk, please call and roll.
Serna?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, very good, all right, that concludes the morning agenda, we do have items set for 2 o'clock, so unless there's any other item to come for the Board at this point, we'll adjourn, recess for lunch and return at 2 o'clock. Good afternoon, want to call back into session, the April 12, 2022, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, and again, thank all who've joined us for the afternoon session, and with that, we'll go ahead and have the Clerk call and roll, just reestablish a quorum.
Serna?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum, and let the record reflect that Supervisor Kennedy is not present.
Okay, very good, so we'll go to our first item.
Okay.
On the printed agenda.
All righty, Item 47 is the Fiscal Year 2022-23 Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan Review and Referral to the County Planning Commission for Project Consistency with the General Plan.
Okay, Mr. Bettis, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Natoli and Supervisors, Colin Bettis, the County Debt Officer. The item before you is the Fiscal Year 2022-23 Capital Improvement Plan, which includes the Plan for Capital Improvements through Fiscal Years 22-23 through 2026-27. Per Ordinance 21.15, the Capital Improvement Program document is to be developed by the County Executive and transmitted to the Board. The Board then refers the proposed capital improvement program to the Planning Commission for review and determination of the consistency with the general plan. One item to note is that there have been a couple of recent amendments to the current year CIP, which are not reflected in the current presentation of the CIP, but those amendments will be reflected in the June final CIP. This five-year CIP includes for airports, $116 million in Fiscal Year 22-23, and a plan for future spending of additional $202 million in the following four years. The key projects identified include a cargo apron expansion, the Terminal Concourse A restroom rehab, Terminal A security checkpoint expansion, and a generator replacement for the tower and airfield lighting at Mather. For county buildings and capital construction, it includes $34.6 million in Fiscal Year 22-23, and a plan for future spending of an additional $104.5 million in the following four years. Facilities that will have significant levels of funding include the BT Collins Youth Detention Facility, the Central Plant, the Main Jail, the Mental Health Center, the New Administration Center, Old Administration Building, Office Building 3, and Rio Consumers Correctional Center. For libraries, it includes $1.16 million in Fiscal Year 22-23, and a plan for future spending of an additional $3.5 million over the following four years. Significant funding is targeted to the Rancho Cordova Library and the Southgate Library. For the Mather Community Campus, all of the projects that were funded last year are anticipated to be completed this fiscal year, so the CIP for Mather does not currently include any funded projects. The county will continue to seek grant opportunities for projects within the campus, and will amend the CIP as funds become available. For regional parks, there's $12.18 million in Fiscal Year 22-23, and an additional amount of $3.5 million in the following four years. Key projects include the American River Parkway Trail Improvements Phase 2, Discovery Park Improvements, Wood Lake Gateway, Gibson Ranch Barn, and the Gene Harvey Community Center. For transportation, there is $107.7 million in Fiscal Year 22-23, and an additional $429.6 million over the following four years. Included in the DOT summary is a table of certain projects that have been delayed due to the timing of the Highway Bridge Program funding. Major projects include AC overlay projects that are covered through a variety of funding sources, and the Watt Avenue Complete Streets Improvement Phase 1. For waste management and recycling, there is $38.4 in Fiscal Year 22-23, with an additional $75.8 million over the following four years. I'll note that the additional vehicles for SB 1383 are still shown on the unfunded list, however, that is one of the recent amendments to the current year CIP that will be reflected in the June submittal. Major projects include the Key for Landfill Gas and Management System Improvements, Key for Landfill Liner, and ancillary features, my apologies, and the North Area Recovery Station, Commercial Waste and Organic Building. The Commercial Waste and Organic Building is an item that is currently on the unfunded list, and a CIP amendment will be brought forward at the time that we bring forward the financing for the facility. For Water Resources Drainage, there's $5.7 million in Fiscal Year 22-23, with an additional $22.4 million in the following four years. A couple of highlighted projects include the Lane-O-Lane Storm Drain Improvement Project and the D-33 El Paricio Storm Drain Pump Station Rehabilitation. For Water Resources Water Supply, there is $124.5 million in Fiscal Year 22-23, with an additional $313 million in the following fiscal year 22, 23, with an additional $313 million in the following four years. A couple of highlighted projects include the Transmission Main Bradshaw Road, Cresswell Drive to Elk Grove Boulevard, and the Arden Service Area Water Main and Meters Phase 3. The recommendation for the item before you is, staff recommends the board request staff to forward the CIP as presented to the planning commission for review of consistency with the general plan. The department directors and representatives are available to answer any questions related to specific projects you may have. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thanks, Colin. Let me turn to my colleagues first to see if you have any questions. I have a couple, but. All right, well, I guess I'll go ahead and start out. So we've received some correspondence, Colin, regarding a project that relates to assessment of the max capacity of the Main Jail. And we've got some email correspondence. It's page 197, and it's the $2.5 million. And again, I think the question's been raised, is this funding already been identified? Is this part of the $8 million previously? But we, again, maybe Jeff can come forward. And I know we've had contracts with Norton Lewis. And so how does this fit within the scheme of what's already there been contracted for, or is this ongoing?
Jeff Gassaway, Department of General Services. A portion of the money has been spent, about $2.3 million. There's about $200,000 allocated for next fiscal year, and that was to finish up the contract we currently have with Norton Lewis for the, looking at the capacity that we would need to reduce the jail to in order to meet the May's consent decree. And we should be coming back to the board within the next month or so with those findings.
Okay, so this is finishing the work off. I know we've had this conversation. I'm sure other board members may get questions about it from time to time. That was my understanding, but I wanted to be clear, because it shows up here in the CIP. So the $200,000 that's in the upcoming fiscal year 22, 23, would be, again, for work that we will have a report on in the very near future.
Right. And if we wrap up the work before July 1, that money would just be
Available for
Available for other things. Most likely, we would reserve it for the ADA improvements at the Main Jail.
Okay.
So.
Okay, very good. That helps. Well, Jeff, while you're there, if I could ask you about Mather Community Campus. Kudos to the $6.5 million that worked and completed. I know that we had roof repairs and boilers and so forth. But there's another $14 million plus. And if you almost read repetitively antiquated water heaters, need to replace chillers and boilers. And we had some of those that were on order that I know that in the interim, our contractor out there, he actually bought space heaters in order to keep the place warm a year ago winter. So when I hear that we're going to depend upon grant funds to fund all that, and yet we, I know we used some general fund and our other allocations last year to meet some of the highest priority needs, discussion this morning about the master plan, but we still have facilities that are occupied. And when I read page after page of antiquated water heaters, boilers, you know, over and over again, how is it we wait just for grant monies? If those are real needs, if you have water heaters that aren't functioning, that are serving people on a daily basis for laundry, for shower sanitation, and so forth. So I guess I'm curious is that what we did in the budget last year, again, thank you to Ann, certainly to you, get, you know, a number of improvements that were well, you know, improvements that were well needed and probably long overdue. But to say we're not going to spend any more money unless we get grant money, I guess I'm curious how that decision got arrived at.
Well, I don't have, I didn't have any funding available for Mather Community Campus. I know we put in a request for some funding.
Okay.
And I think that's still pending.
That's pending through the county budgetary process?
Yeah.
Okay, because Colin said it's grant funds only. And so we are actually considering that in the upcoming budget discussions about, because again, if they're not high priority, if it's a water heater that is either dysfunctional, or I assume if it's non-functional, it would get replaced on an emergency basis. But somebody's done the assessment, Kitchell, I guess, did, and obviously your folks look at this. So what sort of budget request? Could somebody just give me, what are we looking at? Again, not to get ahead of the budgeting process, but what is, what are we looking at for Mather Community Campus?
I believe we asked to, one of the requests was to include it in the allocated cost package, which includes, you know, maintenance and operations, use allowance, energy, and all those components within the allocated cost package. And a portion of that would be able to fund some projects at Mather Community Campus.
Because there's fall prevention because of the way the railings are, there's, you've got fire alarm systems in here. Supervisor Desmond and I had a chance to see the roof that had deteriorated to a point where, you know, basically blown off. And obviously, the repairs, the water went down through the buildings. I know you've since replaced those, I believe those roofs have been replaced. But allowing a roof to get to that condition is not acceptable, particularly when you have habitable, you know, properties, you know, let alone if you had storage or something there. But so do we have anything that's severe that's on that list that hasn't been addressed?
Well, I mean, we would take the projects off the unfunded list as funding became available for that. I do think that we are going to be hopefully receiving some CDBG funding, and we've identified a fire alarm system for that, which would span across two fiscal years because of the way that funding comes through. So, I mean, there are projects in the loop, but we would just take those off the unfunded list as staff prioritize those.
Okay, I get how allocated funding works. But I guess I'm going to suggest that when our budget discussion comes before is that we have an opportunity to talk about it, and that all the money's not plugged away. And I just say that because, again, Mather for too long was, and I'll take my part of the responsibility, but too long neglected. You know, we finally got it added to the CIP a couple of years ago. Again, certainly with your recommendation, that of other staff, we brought forward, you know, several million dollars, six, seven, eight million dollars worth of improvements, using some block grant monies for the one boiler replacement. But when we have a property that, again, houses families, children, individuals from all walks of life, including staff, we need to make sure that our roofs are in good repair, that our boiler and chillers work, and that we're not having to have space heaters or have water running down through the walls and such. And again, I don't follow general services for all that by any means. Those are decisions we made and choices either by not having a choice or by budgeting elsewhere. But just to have it show up in the CIP, that everything on that list now, since we put in six or seven, eight million dollars last couple of years, is now unfunded. And I'm so sure that I find that really acceptable, that, you know, again, because it doesn't have any funding. And if it's general fund that we have to consider, then general fund we have to consider. Fine, if we can get block grant, if we can get ARPA money, or some other source. But for too long, we've occupied that campus for getting close to 30 years now. And it was old to begin with, and there are other renovations. We're going to do the assessment. But I just, you know, I felt pretty strongly that an allocated cost only gives you, and then you compete with everybody else. You compete with the jail, you compete with the mental health treatment center, you compete with all the other county buildings. And, you know, and I just think that puts the campus in a position of being a bit disadvantaged, or at least it has been up until recent years. And again, I credit, we're credits due, but I also am concerned that all that deferred maintenance was to continue to catch up with us. So I see, David, you came to the, or Ann was going to say something.
Just to answer any questions that you may have. We did, you did mention roofs and fall protection. We did recently just sign a contract to have folks go out and do at least another building. So we've been working on the, or Jeff's team's been working on the roofs and the fall protection on several of the buildings. So I do think we are also considering it in the budget as was indicated earlier. So this statement about only waiting for grant funds is true until we get through our budget process, so.
Okay, so we're going to wait another 60 days, and we'll talk about it.
We will have conversations about it.
Okay. And again, I appreciate it. Certainly, Ann, I know you've taken a leadership role in this, and you heard certainly from me and from other board members. And I just, I'm concerned, because again, there's a lot of utility left in that campus. I don't necessarily know in all the buildings. And again, I don't want to throw good money after, you know, after something that we're really not going to end up getting the value out of it. But I just, the deterioration was pretty obvious. And again, I know we had a chance to be out there, and that's since been repaired. Again, kudos. But it was pretty stark. I don't know what Supervisor Desmond's take was on it. But, okay, all right. So we'll see this back in the June budget?
Yeah. And just to clarify, the one roof that David was referring to is actually one of the roofs we anticipated being completed by the end of this fiscal year, but we just assigned that to a Jock contractor. So they're moving forward with that roof, and hopefully it'll be done by the end of the year, so.
By the end of the fiscal year?
Correct.
Okay, all right, very good. Okay, thanks. All right. I didn't have any other, any other questions or other members? Questions about the CIP, any items? Supervisor Serna? Phil, did you have any questions on CIP? Okay, all right. Okay, then this goes to the planning commission, and we'll see it back with budget in June. So thanks for all the departments. You got off easy this year. I know they were all anticipating. But again, I do want to just note, certainly in all seriousness, that, again, I think some of the contributions we made from various funding sources, a lot of it general fund last year, some from other fee sources, has made a difference, though, certainly in parks, roads, water, solid waste, obviously, general facilities as well. So again, a good team of folks, and I know there's a lot of needs out there. But certainly, thanks for, thanks for the effort. It's nice to see a number of things that are, you know, either going to be completed and or were completed during the last year. All right. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do have one caller.
Okay, very good. Let's go to caller, please. I don't have anybody in chambers signed up on this matter, so.
Jillian, can you transfer the caller, please? Hey, caller, could you mute the meeting in the background? And then you have three minutes to make your comments, and you can start now.
Thank you very kindly. Good afternoon, board. My name is Mackenzie Wilson. I am the community organizer for the incarcerated Sacramento. I called this afternoon about item 47, particularly attached from page 51. I guess I'm wondering why the board is voting on an assessment today on a correctional health and mental health facility when we already voted to cancel this project. Second of all, I have a question about why this would be tasked to the same architect that stands to make money off of this project. It's not only shady, but it presents a major conflict of interest, considering that they will present with an obvious bias. There have already been many assessments and reports done, from RAN to monitoring reports, and all have said that a vast majority of legal requirements are related to the training and supervision of staff, medical record-keeping, timely response to kites, which is, which is just another word for asking for help or services, and use of force policies. I'm extremely disappointed in county staff and department heads for their lack of imagination and commitment to this board and this community's decision to reduce the jail population, and instead have spent their time and mine and our money on trying to justify another torture box in Sacramento. The jail is the largest form of public housing in Sacramento, and y'all have used it to criminalize and harm those in poverty, mental health, and substance use crisis, and other things caused by a lack of social safety nets, public health resources, and austerity budgets. The county should not fund this assessment. The money should go to alternatives to incarceration and should reduce, and to a comprehensive plan to reduce the jail population. On the off-chance that Norton Lewis is listening, incarcerated Sacramento plans to stop any and all forms of jail to county. We work to drastically reduce the jail population, and we advocate for a reduction in the budgets of carceral systems used to criminalize only 3% of this county, and demand for vital reinvestment and radical reinvestment in community services like mental health, substance use crisis centers, and neighborhood, and neighborhood alternatives, like things like parks and after-school programs. I'm going to finish up by saying that we don't need a dark tower downtown. We don't need mental health jails downtown. We need mental health services all across Sacramento County. And we plan to stop whatever weird stuff Norton Lewis and department heads like Jeff Gassaway and Ann Edwards are allowing to happen behind boards' decisions and behind those communities, behind closed doors, hidden from board supervisors in this community. Again, I'm disappointed in this, having this conversation today, because what we had looked forward to is working with our new Public Safety and Justice Agency on a drastic jail reduction, comprehensive jail reduction plan, and a way to fund alternatives to incarceration, not a way to build another torture box downtown. Have a great day.
Thank you, Mackenzie.
Okay, so let me just double check if there's any more. And you do not have any more callers, and I will close the queue now.
Okay. All right. So I don't have anyone else in chambers, and no other board comments, then we would be forwarding this to the planning commission, and then they'll return to us, obviously, in the budget framework, with any updates and further discussion at that time. I just wanted to make a quick note, too, to caller's comments, to Mackenzie's comments, that, just to be clear, that of the $2.5 million that's in the project, 871, 971, $2.33 million has already been expended, that the $200,000 remaining was worked at, would then show itself before this board in a public setting, certainly within, anticipated within the next, next 60 days or so, relates to, obviously, jail population reduction and assessment of facilities. And I think it also ties in with the May's consent decree. So, Ann, I don't know if you wanted to offer any comments about how that might be coming back to the board, but.
Well, we will be coming back to the board in the next couple of months with the findings from Norton Lewis around possibilities for significantly reducing the jail population. This work is not about designing or building a new mental health facility.
Okay.
Ship has sailed.
Okay, right. And again, and this isn't new program money either. That's literally I wanted to point out. So this was a carryover with the remaining portion. And if it's not expended, the remaining $200,000, then it will be available for other, other aspects, I guess, of ADA accommodations.
We still have some ADA, significant ADA work to do in the jail, and that we would roll that over into that work if there are funds left.
Okay, very good. Okay, thanks. All right. So with that, do we have a motion on this item? Okay. Moving second then to direct this CIP to be forwarded to the county planning commission, and report back to the board once the commission has considered as well. So if nothing further, then I ask Madam Clerk, please call and roll.
Serna?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you. Okay. And I know we have an off-agenda speaker. We're going to finish out the remaining portion of the agenda, and then we'll come to that in just a little bit here. So, okay. Next item, please.
Item 48 is the fiscal year 2022-23 five-year technical improvement, excuse me, technology improvement plan for review and approval.
Good afternoon, supervisors. Rami Zachariah, Chief Information Officer. Every year, the Department of Technology works with county departments to identify mission-critical systems that need to be implemented, upgraded, or replaced due to their end of useful life. The 2022-23 Technology Improvement Plan includes projects that aim to improve services to our community, efficiency, reliability, and security. These projects span several years with total budget of more than $61 million. The following projects are in various stages of execution. Correctional Health Automated Medication Dispensing System, Criminal Justice Jail Management System, Environmental Management Case Management System, Human Assistance Welfare Case Management System, Mental Health Crisis Call Center Response System, Property Tax System, Sacramento Regional Communication System Microwave Replacement Project, and Social Health Information Exchange. This year, we have completed one project, and it is the Water Resources Maintenance and Asset Management System. And for future projects, we have plans for Microsoft Office 365. With that said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Board members, any questions of Rami on the technology plan? Board members, any questions of Rami on the technology plan? Phil, anything on the line?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thanks. Rami, just one question, so to the CGIS system, could you just, again, that's a pretty major expenditure, about three and a half million dollars to replace the system? And how's it determine who's the, the lead on it? It seemed to me that the District Attorney was previously, but it says the Sheriff's Department is the lead on this?
Well, the Criminal Justice Information System that stands today includes the District Attorney Courts, Sheriff's, probation, and, and public defender. Over the last few years, you know, the District Attorney has peeled off, the courts now in the process for implementing a new court case management system, and the Sheriff is also is in the process of implementing a jail management system. For this project, the lead on it is the Sheriff Department. And this really looks only at the jail management system component of it.
So, you said that the DEA peeled off their portion of this? Is that what you said?
Yes, over the years, you know, it's important to mention that the current system that we have, while it's very integrated, it's still a mainframe system that's just limited in functionality and so on. So as department look to expand their systems and their services, they had to implement replacement systems. So this is a process that's been going on for years. The courts have, has been in the process of trying to implement a new case management system. We believe they have a new vendor now that's ready that has products out there. So this will work with the new, with the new court system, with the new District Attorney systems as well. And it's also important to mention that all the partners in the criminal justice community have, have committed to sharing data with one another in a very proactive fashion.
So are the systems designed such as that that information is easily exchanged, certainly with any firewalls that would need to be in there to, to protect transmittal of certain information? Again, I don't begin to know what that might be, but, so, they're all designed to talk to one another, to interface seamlessly? Is that fair?
Well, that, that is the plan. Today, we download the data from the mainframe system and we share it with, with these partners. And in execution of this project and the previous projects, all the partners have committed to continue that data sharing model.
So it's, it's just, it's the DEA, the courts, and the sheriff? Is probation or public defender?
Yes, probation and the public defender are parts of it, too. And they all have their own small, not small, but they all have their own components of this project. Probation is, has done a new case management system that they continue to improve. And we're working with, with the public defender, we submitted a growth request for next year to kind of enhance the case management system that the public defender office has.
One last question, so from the staff report says that you're going to go live with this system upgrade this calendar year, is that what I understand?
That is the plan. My understanding from the Sheriff Department is that they are doing the final QA testing with the regional partners on the jail management system, but the expectation that it would go live this calendar year.
Okay, and so you no longer have a mainframe system? Use, it's all these interconnected separate systems? Is that how?
No, no, we still have a mainframe system. The courts today, they still use the, the mainframe system for the criminal adult case processing in the courts.
Hmm, so, okay. All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Serna? Go ahead, yeah, Phil, go ahead.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Actually, do you have a question for Rami? Rami, you, you listed, you know, a number of systems that would, you know, would be improved. When I was first seated to the Board, I remember for the first, oh, five years or so, we repeatedly had discussions, annual discussions about very, very antiquated computer languages that were still being, still being applied and used, namely Cobalt from back in the 70s and 80s, and the fact that it was becoming extremely difficult to find individuals or, or service providers that could work in that computer language environment or coding environment, if you will. So are we, is that completely in our rearview mirror? Is that, have those improvements been made so that we're not, again, put in the place where we're relying on very expensive servicing because of the age of the systems and the, the coding and the languages?
Well, unfortunately, we are still using those languages to maintain, you know, CGIS and the tax system. You know, it was our hope that CGIS would have been off the mainframe by now, but due to challenges with our partners, that's still, still not the case. Right now for CGIS, the, the two or three people that are working on it are retired and new tenant, you know, from the county that have decided to come back and help us with that. And we have contractors on the tax, we have, we have county staff that are active employees, not retired yet. But we're definitely, you know, as, as time continues to go on and on, these systems becomes more and more difficult to, to support. We're very well aware of that, we're letting our partners know, the departments know, and we're actively working on replacing these systems.
So when, you know, I, I know you can't give us a date certain, but how much closer does today's action get us to a place where we don't have to search high and low for retired and new tenants that, you know, know the systems?
Well, I'm, I'm seeing, I'm hoping that in the next three years or so, you know, the criminal justice system hopefully will be off the mainframe and so will be the tax system be. On the tax system, I just wanted to give you an update, we are in a procurement phase, we did the vendor demos and we're in evaluation stage. So that project is moving forward as well, too.
Those are all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Rami.
Thank you, sir. Good. And we made a $30 million expenditure last year, over a couple of years, to do the property tax system, which had been long, long needed, so that shouldn't need a system upgrade anytime in the next few years, right? That should be good to go for a while?
Yes, we're definitely very grateful to the Board generosity in supporting us in replacing this system. It's something that definitely needs to be replaced.
And help get the ball over the line on that one, so that was good.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Do we have any public comments on this?
We did not have any callers.
Okay, all right, and anything further by the Board? If not, a motion will be in order.
I'll move the item, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, moved by Serna, second by Desmond, and a close, close third by Supervisor Frost. So, all right, very good. If nothing further, then please call the roll.
Serna?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rami. Okay, item 49?
Item 49, receive a second quarter fiscal status report and approve and appropriation adjustment request for various departments.
Good afternoon, Amanda.
Good afternoon, Chair Natoli, Board members. Amanda Thomas, Chief Fiscal Officer, and I believe I have a PowerPoint. There it is. I, I'm here this afternoon to present the fiscal year 2021-22 second quarter fiscal status report, which reflects revenue and expenditure estimates as of January 2022. I'll also be joined this afternoon by Wayne Padilla, who is a principal with the county's Sales Tax Consultant, HDL Companies, who's joining the meeting by phone and will be available to provide additional detail about increases in the county's sales tax revenues. So I'll first start with an overview before providing more detail on estimated revenues and expenditures. As I mentioned, the revenue and expenditure estimates included in this report are as of January 2022, so they're based on six months of actual data during the fiscal year and estimates for the remaining six months of the fiscal year. Overall, nearly all departments are estimating expenditures to be lower than budgeted, and I'll discuss some of the reasons for that later in the presentation. And while overall budgeted appropriations are more than sufficient to cover estimated expenditures, some budget units require adjustments so to either increase or transfer appropriations, so we do also have recommendations to adjust appropriations where necessary. In terms of revenues, we continue to see positive trends in both discretionary and semi-discretionary revenues are estimated to be substantially higher than budgeted. That means that for the general fund, the combination of higher revenues and lower expenditures results in a sizable estimated fund balance carryforward of $209 million. And as you know, the remaining fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2021-22 is an available one-time funding source for the fiscal year 22-23 budget to either fund appropriations or continue to build reserves. So looking a little closer at discretionary revenues, this chart shows a comparison of discretionary revenue by category for the adopted budget and the current second quarter estimate. So as you can see, while property tax revenues are by far the largest source of revenues, and they're shown in blue on this chart, the increase in discretionary revenues compared to budget is almost entirely attributable to the sales and use tax revenue category, and that's shown in red here. So when we look at the numbers, discretionary revenue and reimbursements are estimated to be $38 million or 5.3% higher than budgeted for an estimated total of $783 million. Property tax revenues account for about 70% of the total and are estimated to be just slightly less than the budgeted amount at $521 million, while just 17% of the estimated total, sales and use tax revenues of $134 million account for the largest share of the increase at $32 million, representing over a 30% increase compared to budget. As Wayne will discuss in a moment, the magnitude of this increase is largely driven by the change in reporting of a major retailer, but I want to emphasize that due to confidentiality rules, we're not able to disclose or discuss the retailer by name. Before I turn it over to Wayne, I also mentioned that other changes in discretionary revenues include a teeter reimbursement increase of $3.5 million, which results from prior year delinquent property taxes, and a $2.4 million, $2.4 million of AB 1869 backfill revenue from the state. So as you may recall, AB 1869 eliminated certain criminal justice fines and fees resulting in an estimated revenue loss to the county of approximately $9 million in the fiscal year 2021-22 budget. Because the amount of backfill revenue to be received by the county was not known at the time the budget was developed, it was, was not included, but the, the $2.4 million in backfill actually received is only a fraction of the revenue that was previously generated that was effectively backfilled with general fund discretionary resources.
Amanda, are matters of tax payment, sales tax otherwise, out there a matter of public record?
So that's, that's a great segue, because I was about to turn it over to Wayne, who, who certainly can discuss that in more detail. I think in general, total sales tax revenues are a matter of public record, but specific details regarding individual companies' sales tax are, are not, and that's, and that's where we're prohibited because of confidentiality rules. But at this point, I really was, I was prepared to turn it over to Wayne, so I can, assuming he is on the line, I will do that now and we'll turn to his slides.
Okay. Thanks, Amanda. Ms. Padilla, you're on.
Good afternoon, Chairman Natoli and members of the Board. Wayne Padilla with HDL Companies, and I do want to stress, Amanda has it exactly correct. We're able to discuss revenues by total and by significant categories of businesses, but we're not able to isolate information that would be specific to a particular taxpayer, hence the need to protect confidentiality of that taxpayer that made a reporting change and which increased the amount of sales tax coming into the county substantially. Let me just pause right there and see if there's any follow-up that I need to provide related to that.
Supervisor Frost has a question, too.
I just, my question is, can you tell us what the industry groups are specifically?
So the, the industry groups, specifically auto transportation, business and industry, building construction, food and drug, fuel, general consumer goods, and the pool, the countywide use tax pool. So those are the major groups, and then restaurants and hotels as well. So those are the major groups. The one group that's most affected in terms of growth of tax is the business and industry group.
Thank you.
So, Wayne, Supervisor Natoli, just so, I understand the explanation, but, for example, property tax, that's a matter of record of whether you paid them or not, but we're saying sales tax by the generator and I guess the payee is not tracked, I guess it was tracked by Franchise Tax Board, somebody does it, but it's all held in confidence? I didn't realize, I know personal income taxes are confidential, but sales tax, you know, both automobile, again, by industry, obviously we know, but comes to the county of residency for, say, an auto, auto sales tax. But I just want to be clear, so for some reason, I thought that when you had major tax generators or, or small ones, that there was a point by which the public could understand that, I mean, those are taxes that are paid, they're public, they become public dollars once they're paid. But you're saying that's all protected information? Has it always been protected information?
It, it has, sir, always been protected information, specifically Revenue and Taxation Code Section 7056. And I believe what you may be referring to, there are instances where, for example, in financial statement disclosures, the comprehensive financial statements prepared by a city or county can provide a group, say, of the 10 largest property taxpayers and identify them alphabetically. In the case of the services provided by my company to the county, we provide a quarterly newsletter, and in that, we identify the top 25 tax contributors alphabetically, 25 being the minimum number of taxpayers that can be on the list, and they're alphabetical in order to avoid any indication of relative tax allocation by company.
Okay, so, so the best we could know is they, they paid some tax. How much and where they'd stand on any list is unknown, except for we received the dollars, so, okay, that's official, I don't even need to pursue it any further, so.
Okay.
Very good, thanks. Not gonna, not gonna get to the answer anyway, so, all right, thank you, Wayne, go ahead and proceed.
Okay, very well, thank you. So on this slide that's before you, as I've indicated, all major business groups have significant growth in receipts, which is important. Specifically, the business and industry has grown the most. And I make the comment here as a, as a sub-bullet, that while total receipts rose, other businesses within that segment of industry have declined. And I just, I, it's not to raise concern, but simply to point out that while we're seeing an increase in receipts for the group, some industries, specifically office supplies, IT equipment, which is a timely conversation, and office equipment, those businesses tended to peak early in the worst of the pandemic because of the, of the added demand. Downstream, in terms of time, those sales have fallen off. So again, not to, not to raise a red flag with my comment, I just wanted to give you some perspective on that. Auto sales have just grown tremendously, they continue to do so, and it's really being explained by economists as just an overexuberance on the part of the public, and a term that's coming into vogue called FOMO. FOMO is an acronym standing for fear of missing out. My neighbor got a car on one side of the street, neighbor on the other side of the street got a car, well, doggone it, the consumer thinks, I better go get a car, regardless of the price. And that's really the only explanation we have for what's been taking place.
That used to be known as Keeping Up With The Joneses, I think, long ago, the fear of missing out, right?
That's, it's a similar, similar, similar mindset, but now you have vehicles that are marked at 15% to 25% above normal market and people are still in the queue to buy those vehicles. And it's not something that we're expecting to see die way back. We're expecting, well, we've had quarters with 30, 40, 50% growth, we're expecting to see a year later, growth on top of that, because the prices just continue to escalate. Construction is another area here, as you know, the Sacramento region is very desirable in the eyes of those wanting to leave the higher cost areas, specifically the Bay Area. So while construction prices have been escalating So while construction prices have been escalating pretty significantly, it really has not had a deterring effect on construction activity. We do expect construction material pricing to moderate later this year and substantially in calendar 2023. Fuel prices, right now, we're seeing the rapid run-up in prices at the pump, some softening in recent weeks, very, very recently, but again, that's not really slowing demand for fuel very significantly. We do expect prices to begin to retract starting later this year, later this calendar year. General consumer goods, fortunately for retailers, starting the end of the third quarter of '21 and through the fourth quarter of '21, through the holiday season, shoppers returned in droves to the brick-and-order locations. That began to drive down the volume of online sales that were being experienced. Didn't deter it, but it was a good sign for retailers that they're going to have good holiday sales, which they did, and this should continue for the rest of calendar '22. Next slide, please. Restaurants. What we're seeing with restaurants is a healthy, not only rebound from the drop that they experienced at the worst of the pandemic, Sacramento region did not experience nearly as severe a decline as other areas, especially those that are more tourist-centric. And what we're seeing is essentially with the pent-up demand from the homebound, those that weren't able to get to the restaurants for a variety of reasons, they're now taking advantage of the pandemic conditions being lifted, and they're actually dining out more often than they otherwise would. And finally, we come to the use tax pool. This is a compilation of taxes, they're not distributed to specific jurisdictions, but they are accumulated in what's called a pool, and allocated to jurisdictions throughout the county, the unincorporated county area, and the incorporated cities, based on their share of total quarterly tax. With the growth in the county's total tax from all these sales transactions, you've commanded a larger share of that pool, which in turn has grown the allocations paid out. So Mr. Chairman, I'll pause there, that's the last bullet on the slide, and I'll be open to any questions.
Okay, thank you, Wayne. Any questions, we have board members and Mr. Pedia. All right, seeing none, Amanda, continue, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Wayne. Okay, so the other important category of revenues we often talk about are what are referred to as semi-discretionary revenues, which include 1991 and 2011 realignment and Proposition 172 revenues. These revenues are largely based on statewide sales tax revenue and, to a lesser degree, vehicle license fee revenue, and some of the same underlying trends that Wayne just described have contributed to revenue estimates being substantially higher than budgeted. So some of the reasons include economic recovery from COVID-19, inflation, and state and federal stimulus, all contributing to increased statewide sales tax revenues, which is increasing our semi-discretionary revenues. While these are not general fund revenues, they are accounted for in separate funds and transferred to the general fund to offset eligible expenditures, reducing the amount that would otherwise be funded with discretionary resources. Semi-discretionary revenues are estimated to be $52 million higher than budgeted for a total of $899 million, and several of the recommended appropriation adjustments associated with this item are required to increase appropriations in the semi-discretionary revenue funds by $46 million so that additional reimbursements can be made in the general fund. At the same time, estimated eligible expenditures in some departments are lower than originally budgeted, resulting in what is a net increase in expected semi-discretionary reimbursements in the general fund of $29 million. So any semi-discretionary revenue not spent during fiscal year '21-22 would be available to fund future year expenditures. So I'll turn now to talk about estimated net financing uses in the general fund. Overall, estimated departmental expenditures are estimated to be $290 million or 8.4% below budget. This is primarily resulting from the continued impacts of COVID-19, including higher-than-anticipated position vacancies and delays filling positions, reduced demand for services, delays in supplies and project delays, and lower-than-anticipated caseloads in CalWorks and other programs. Additionally, there were substantial new or enhanced programs or services, what we call growth, approved for the budget for a full year for fiscal year 2021-22, but not incurring expenditures for a full year due to mid-year implementation. And also, unspent appropriation for contingency contributes to the variance between estimated and budgeted expenditures. Departmental revenues are estimated to be $82 million below budget, and reimbursements other than semi-discretionary reimbursements are estimated to be $65 million below budget, both largely reflecting the lower estimated expenditures. The net result of estimated expenditures in departmental revenues and reimbursements is a $142 million decrease in departmental expenditures funded with discretionary and semi-discretionary resources. So if you take that $142 million and add the $29 million in estimated additional semi-discretionary reimbursements, and the $38 million in estimated additional discretionary revenue, you end up with a $209 million estimated general fund available fund balance carryforward. So you can think of this as the amount that's left over or unspent this year, that is then available to either spend next year or contribute to reserves to be available in future years. But because it is a one-time source of funding, it should not be viewed as an ongoing resource. And as you can see on this chart, the amount of available fund balance carryforward has historically been in the 30 to 80 million range. So while fund balance is always technically one-time, we should not expect a fund balance at this level to be available in future years.
That's what you said in 2021.
What's that?
That's what you said in 2020, 2021. And I know it could bottom fall any time, but having looked at all those lean years leading up to that, it's really been nice to see some ability, to have some flexibility to, talked a lot about today, so.
Yes, yes, understood. So in addition to the overall fiscal status update, we are also recommending certain appropriation adjustments in budget units where expenditures are estimated to exceed appropriations. Adjustments that are funded by additional revenue or budget transfers don't result in additional budgeted net county costs or use of discretionary resources, and these include an adjustment to the county executive cabinet budget unit to reflect the correct budget unit for ARPA administration, a transfer between budget objects and code enforcement, an increase in appropriations in the Department of Personnel Services for services that are funded by the Department of Child, Family and Adult Services and Department of Waste Management, a transfer between objects in the sheriff's budget unit to reimburse the inmate welfare fund for prior year ineligible project expenditures, and a transfer between objects in the correctional health budget unit due to staffing vacancies. Adjustments that include additional budgeted net county costs are funded with a transfer from the appropriation for contingency, and these include $311,000 to rebudget the general fund share of hazmat services that are administered by the Environmental Management Department, $100,000 increase to the clerk of the board budget unit to cover unanticipated expenditures due to additional board and commission meetings, redistricting, and personal protective equipment, and $1,178,630, some of which is offset by additional revenue for the conflict criminal defender budget unit due to a high volume of overloaded cases from the public defender's office. Finally, the semi-discretionary and teeter reimbursements that I mentioned earlier also require budget adjustments to transfer those funds to the general fund. And with that, the recommendations are to receive a second quarter fiscal status report and approve the appropriation adjustment request, number 20222051, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thanks, Amanda. Do we have questions from board members?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Phil, go ahead.
Thank you. Amanda, thank you for the report. First, I want to make sure I, and the public, heard you correctly, because I think it could be misinterpreted, but you mentioned, you know, the general decisions around this revenue is, to understand, understanding it's one-time, it's not ongoing, but it's not either-or, it's not just either put it all in reserves or, you know, prioritize it appropriately in the budget process, it could be a mix of the two, so I just want to make that clear.
Yes, that's correct, thank you.
Thanks. So I don't know, Mr. Chair, if I may have missed this, but I'd like to hear from our CEO about some of her thoughts about how we do make those decisions at some point, I assume, very soon. I think there are some very high priorities that need some attention, namely, and this is kind of an ongoing exclamation from me, but namely around the American River Parkway, and what I continue to believe is a, you know, fairly small budget for the size of our regional park system. But I'd like to hear maybe, you know, some ideas from Ms. Edwards about process. So moving forward, how could we tee this up so that we have a thoughtful conversation in public at the right time to discuss, you know, the potentials, the potential decisions around amending or augmenting our reserves, but at the same time, you know, appropriately identifying some immediate needs that we typically do during a regular budget consideration?
Okay, thanks, Phil, yeah. And I know eight weeks from now, we're going to be in these chambers in hearings on the recommended budgets, so I guess that's to Phil's question, so I'll turn to you.
Yes, that's absolutely right, we will be here. We are in the process right now of looking at all of the many priorities that are facing the county. We are continuing to use last year's poll from the community in terms of the priorities that the community identified. We also know what many of your priorities are, and we are factoring that into our considerations as well, but we are currently in the process of looking at all of the growth needs that are out there, and they far exceed, as you can imagine, the available funding, and we will be bringing our best recommendations to you in June. We will also be sharing with you, as we have in the last couple of years, the recommendations or the requests that came from departments that we are not recommending, so that you can see the full picture of what the requests were and what we're recommending, so that you all can make decisions on what is most important to you.
I appreciate that, Ann, thank you. Is there a time then, between now and the time that you would bring the full suite of budget recommendations to the board in a public session, is there time for you to meet individually with each of us to get an even better sense relative to the 209 million, not just to the overall general fund, but specifically to the extra revenue that has just been explained?
Yes, I would be happy to meet with each of you individually.
Did you want to, would you want to meet every day or once a week?
And then lastly, Mr. Chair, if you indulge me here, you know, we continue to hear from a number of different community groups that, you know, on a fairly regular basis stress the board on a whole host of community needs in, you know, in the context of their particular perspective, whether it's social justice, or, you know, the jails or park systems. And I would strongly encourage, and perhaps she's already doing this, but strongly encourage the CEO to at least be prepared that this is going to certainly, you know, draw the attention of probably, you know, all of those groups again. And we should also be prepared as a board to understand that I think the chorus is likely going to be something anathema to, well, you have this unique ability to make and set priorities around revenue that you weren't expecting, so now's the time to strike forward, board of supervisors. So I think we ought to be prepared for that. I'm not necessarily suggesting, you know, we just automatically say yes to everything, but I think it's incumbent upon us to, you know, welcome and prepare for that, that exchange with the public.
Okay, good, good point, Phil, thank you. Okay, any other comments? If not, do we have anyone on the phone? I have no one in chambers on this item, so, anybody?
We do not have anyone on the call.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you for the update, Amanda, and this does have appropriation adjustments included, so require a four-fifths vote as it relates to the actual items on this, or several, several of the actual items on this agenda item, so, okay. With that, then, do we have a motion?
Some votes?
Oh, got a motion in second, motion by Desmond, second by Serna, and Frost got the third again, so, you gotta be quicker on the motion, or second. All right, very good. If nothing else on this item, then Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Serna?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, all right. Before we go to the appointment items, I'm going to take the off-agenda item, Madam Clerk.
Want to do the off-agenda? Sure.
So we have an off-agenda speaker in chambers, and I'll call her forward in just a moment. I'm going to allot some additional time, I've had conversation with Ms. Gere, and indicated I would allow her up to 10 minutes to make her statements and presentations if she needs that. I want to also note that you forwarded some information earlier today, and Counsel going way in, we were going to prepare copies, but have been advised that because of the material contained related to minors in the juvenile courts, that was unable to be circulated, so I just wanted to be aware of that, Tara, that we weren't able to circulate that. And I don't know, Counsel, before she came to the podium, because I did tell her we would circulate that, and she may not want to reference any specifics, so you might want to give some guidance regarding the information.
Sure, the person that is here to speak to you today had asked the clerk to provide two documents to the Board of Supervisors. One of the documents was provided, and I believe it is an excerpt or a part of a brief to the Court of Appeals regarding a juvenile dependency case that is a matter of public record and can be disclosed. The other document that was asked to be distributed is a juvenile court record that is protected by Welfare and Institutions Code, Section 827, and is not able to be made public. Therefore, it was not posted or distributed to the board.
Okay, so one piece of this was distributed, and which piece was that?
Correct.
Which piece was that?
I believe it was referred to as the document number one, it's a, I think it's a brief to the Court of Appeals.
Okay, all right, so.
It was cut off, so I couldn't, there was not a.
Okay, so that was provided, I just wanted.
There was one document provided and one that was not.
Okay, so board member should have that, so, again, I just wanted Tara to be aware of that. Okay, with that, then, Tara, I'll invite you to the podium, if you have folks who want to accompany you, that's fine, too, or if you have others that are going to present, and I'll set the clock for 10 minutes. And just as you're coming down, I want to let you know, too, that the board, I think I've told you this, but just for the record, we can't take action on it, you're obviously going to put forward some comments and maybe some requests, but we're not able to act today, but certainly are going to listen intently, and appreciate you being here, so I'll make the podium available to you.
Thank you guys for, of course, being here and also just to give me a chance to be heard. My name is Tara Gere. I am a licensed foster parent here in Sacramento County, and I won't say the, I guess I won't say their name, but I just want to let you guys know this is who I am here today, because this is my foster daughter, and this is my granddaughter, okay? On December the 7th, she lost her parental rights, and she died January the 15th of this year, okay? I have been her voice of saying that, how could this happen? She has a, really, I'm just not going to say foster, because she is my daughter, and the child is my grandchild. They have been in my life for six years. CPS has not allowed me to visit with the baby, nor to bring Araya and Alana back into my home for I could be a support for her to, of getting her daughter back. She's no longer here, so I have to be the advocate for her. June 24th, her daughter is going to be adopted out. CPS will not let me into a courtroom. I hired an attorney. Last month, on March the 11th, I went into court with an attorney. Right when we got waited on, we waited for like 45 minutes to talk to the judge, right when we were there to talk to the judge, he didn't want to represent me. Don't know why. I reached out again to CPS. This has been going on for two years. I have been allowed to go into the courtroom, because I have another foster youth that's in my care. I have been allowed to go into courtroom and CFT meetings with her, but when it comes to Alana, they reject me for going into the courtroom or anything, a CFT meeting or anything for her. I'm not sure why is this. Also, well, I said, the JB 180 is what I filed. I went and talked to the judge, and I wasn't able to talk to them. The CPS staff that I have been reaching out to for the last two years is Angela Baker, Melissa Boyd, Rod House, Susan from Ambusman. Caught me on April the 7th, and her words to me was, on a phone call, that Mr. Desmond's office had called her and told her that I had a complaint, which is true. And she told me that not to come and address the board members. And I asked her, why is that? She said, nothing will be done. I said, okay. She said, I'm going to email you people that you can reach out that's going to help you. So at that time, I asked her, I said, Susan, I called you back on 517, 2019, in a cry out to get some assistance or some help of what was going on with Alana, oh God, I shouldn't have said the kids, I'm sorry, to get some assistance. And I said, so why in 2022, you don't want me to talk to the board members, and you're saying that they won't help me, and now you want to give me this list of people? So I told her, I said, okay, thank you for the information. She sent the email, I have it, and she caught me back, and she asked me, will I, she said, Ms. Gere, she said, well, because I don't want to lie, she said, will you bring all Alana's court documents to CPS? And I said, why would I bring the documents? Do you want me to pack up all Alana's belongings and bring it to CPS? And she was like, no, just all the court documents. So I said, okay, so you can destroy all evidence or everything of Alana's. So that was the end of that conversation. So going back to the list of people, from Susan Ambusman, Veronda Moore, Michelle Calais, Melissa Lloyd, Trina, Stacy Moreno, and Alicia Gertiris, is also the adoption social worker that will not call me back. I talk to other social workers because of my other foster daughters, and I can talk to those supervisors, I can go to court, I can do everything, but when it comes to this issue with Alana and the baby, I'm just blocked. After Alana passed away, I did tell them, I said, they were the cause of her dying, because everything that she has done, and
It's okay.
And everything that she's done, they still, they failed to protect her. And I'm her mom, and I have a license. When she died, I was the one that identified her body. I was the one that, that I had to go and pick out a casket. I had to find where would she be buried? I wasn't able to go and get Alana a plaque yet for her grave, because I still, I'm so, I'm so torn because of what they've done. So these are the things that I went to get her for her grave for right now, until I'm able to go and get her a headstone. Araya, I have not seen her since July, 2000, last year, 2021. I seen Araya at Alana's funeral on February the 11th. I haven't seen her, please hear me, I have not seen her since July of 2021. I seen her on February the 11th, 2022. That baby was so attached to me, not to the caregiver, the whole time at the funeral. The baby was with me. I have witnessed, and at that time, that's when the family started addressing to say, how does, this lady has this baby, but not the actual one. Araya, when Alana was pregnant, she had her. We brought Araya home to our home and took care of her until the day CPS took her. They also lied in the report, and they said that no one was there to get Araya the night that she was taken. I was there. I was there. Alana asked them, can she, can Araya go with my foster mom? No. So I told Alana I was confused. I didn't know what to do. So I said, Alana, just let them take Araya. Let them take Araya, and we'll figure it out. And the figuring out is the lies, not supporting her, not taking care of her. To this day, I'm still calling them. Until finally, I reached out to Mr. Desmond, I did, I called every supervisor. I called Ms. Frost's office, of course, Mr. Knowsley, Mr. Desmond, and I think I called Kennedy, Mr. Kennedy's office, to reach out to say that I need some support, because I'm going to lose my granddaughter for no reason. When I the one that took care of her and I helped her mom. My promise to her was I was going to do any and everything. The money that I saved for an attorney for her was the money that I used to bury her. I, I did. I never asked for a handout for anybody. I did what a mother is supposed to do for her child. And my reasoning for being here is just, I haven't, still have not been acknowledged by the court, that I am here since 2013, when she was taken in 2019, and no one still has addressed or said anything. I can't even get into a courtroom to hire an attorney. So this is why I'm here, reaching out to the board to say, please help me. Please, please help me. I don't know what you guys can do, but I'm just asking you today to just please help me. Please. And I just wanted to say one more thing. The paperwork that I had sent for, because I just wanted the board members to just see, because there was one attorney that did see the wrongful doing of CPS that they were doing. So I had just wanted you guys to actually see it, because I know that they always say, oh, it's a, it's court, you know, court, court, court. So I actually just wanted you guys to see it, but I guess, you know what I'm saying, you can't. So I guess just word of mouth of hearing of what the report was. The actual other report was that they made accusations saying that I kicked the mother and the child out. They placed the mother in an AB 12 apartment and left her with nothing. Alana called me and told me that she was in this apartment. I had had a surgery, so I didn't get able to talk to her about, okay, you moved in, what happened? I furnished the apartment, and I furnished the apartment, I bought her a microwave, a stove, or TV. I bought things for the baby that she needed. The baby was ill. I took the baby, kept, took her home, you know, to, whatever, I kept her because she was sick, so I bought the medication for her. CPS said that they took the baby because no food, no diapers, and she had let one kid, her biological mother, keep the baby the day that I couldn't keep her. So what I did is I went to the place to get an EBT card. They held her check, so I covered everything. I bought the food, I bought the diapers, because she was getting low. I funded everything, and I'm the bad person. I don't know. So I know that I have a certain time. I hope it was enough that you guys would just say, hey, you know what, let's look into this and see what's going on, and what can we do? I appreciate it very much.
Okay. Well, thank you, Tara. Thank you for sharing.
Yes.
And I guess, Ann, we'll just turn to you and say that, yeah, maybe you can have this, take a look at it if you haven't already, and I think, you know, the essence, obviously, of concern has been expressed by Tara, and I don't think anybody can do it better than you did, so.
Yes.
And we were able to share one document, just both of them were, and I think you touched on that, and I know you tried to protect the confidentiality, so, okay. Tara, and so, again, was there anybody else that was here just to speak? I could allow them a little more time, but if not, if you covered it, I just want to be sure.
Yes.
Okay, just tell us your name.
Just briefly.
Okay.
Myla Cross, and I'm my sister's, I'm the older sister here.
Okay.
And this has been going on for some time. I'd just like to address the court and just say that, first of all, my sister is, she has a huge heart, and for her to do what she has done, to allow Alana to come into her home and to take on as her own, her granddaughter, and her granddaughter as well. And there were instances that I have sat in on, and the fight, and just trying to want to understand the courts, the foster care, as to what was, what's the, what's the crime in this? What's the crime in a mother having a child and her maternal, as a mother, to be taken away, her rights? What did she do? And my sister, because she didn't know. This, this was a young person who didn't really know, basically, when it comes down to the court system. So she advocated, she fought for, she's just letting her know, she's just stood in the gap for fighting, and they're fighting, and they're fighting, and then this happens. And so it's just been at a loss. And for her daughter, which is the granddaughter, it's like a maternal, she's there at birth. It's like, it's, it's just a sad situation, and for the foster care not willing to work with her, and then she's being a foster parent, and then there's other kids that she has. And it's like, okay, well, what's wrong with this case? What's, what's wrong with the rights of this young mother being with her daughter? What, and, and being able to allow to come in, to be able to continue to foster? And I just, you know, that's just where I lay it, but this is a huge, this is, it's a sad day when it comes down to the, it's just my opinion, on the system and the rights when we have our children in the system, and then they have a child, and then they're in the system. So there has to be something there to protect, and when someone like her, this is what the foster system is designed for, for people like her, to advocate for our young, and for those who don't have a voice. And Ms. Gere here, my sister, she has been that voice, and she's still to this day. So she's here, and I'm with her, and just help, and what the law provides, and what we can do here to really solve this.
Thank you, Ms. Foster.
So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
You bet, thank you. Reverend Williams, did you want to address the board?
Thank you, Mr. Natoli and board. Thank you all for your listening here, and as I sit there and I listen to Ms. Gere's testimony and her pain, I got to meet Alana as a young lady, not only as a coach, as a pastor, as a business owner. I've known Tara and her children and family for more than 10 years, and so that's how I got to meet Alana when she was a young lady. She was also always obedient and respectful and wonderful to me. And obviously, this young lady had been through some things, but I will say this, it would be a travesty if Ms. Gere is not given an opportunity to love a baby that was born in her home. As she stated, not only did I know this young lady, but I also had to eulogize her. I saw the entire interaction. This, when this baby saw her, she came to her presence, never left. And my concern is, and I would appreciate if the board is able to do this, not just this case, but I'm sure there's others, what is the protocol, or the hidden protocol in the CPS system that are creating environments and situations like this? That's my biggest concern. Thank you for your attention and concern.
Thank you, Reverend Williams. Okay, well, thank all of you, certainly, for your testimony here and your comments, and we'll have Ms. Edwards talk with our folks, take a look at it. And again, we're not able to act today, but thank you, Tara, for sharing. I'm sure, again, the emotion's well up and revvly, so I understand, but.
Can I say one more thing to the board?
Yes, sure.
That I didn't say? I continuously get phone calls and emails every single day from CPS of children that knows that I took care of Alana and other children. They keep calling me every single day for other children, and what I'm saying, if my house is licensed, so why is my house licensed for these set of children, but not for the first children that was with me in the beginning? And that's what I wanted to say. And I told them that I can't do it, it's at a standstill right now, that I know that kids know that they, the love that they get when they come to my home, but right now, I'm at a standstill, because I'm fighting for something that I need to focus on, so.
Okay.
But thank you guys so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tara.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, and thank you all for being here.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Okay, that's our off agenda item. Do we have any other off agendas this afternoon?
Got it.
I think we closed it. Okay, all right, so we do have a couple other items and for the agenda, item 50, I believe.
Item 50 is appointments from your own ranks to the National Association of Counties.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Serna.
Yes, thank you. So the reason this has been agendaized, I requested it after having a brief conversation with Supervisor Desmond, and, you know, having served as the designated NACO representative from this board for a number of years now, I've come to the conclusion that I think it's a, it's a post that serves all of us well, and quite frankly, I think all of us should have an opportunity to represent the board, both at the state through CSAC and NACO, and given the fact that Mr. Desmond is the newest member of the board, I suggested to him that he might want to assume, assume it from, from the, well, from my history of serving, and. serving, and, you know, I think it will serve him well, and he expressed interest. I, I have given it some more thought since that conversation, and it's probably not appropriate to act on it today because I don't think it would be agendized, or it has been agendized correctly, but I think maybe going forward, we, the board might want to consider a tier rotation with regards to the, the principal representation to CSAC and NACO, as well as the backup for each, so that, again, all members of the board kind of at least have that opportunity, they can accept it or not, but I do think it's a, an experience that, that serves all of us individually well, and serves the board well, and serves CSAC and NACO well, so. But in this instance, because I did, did have that conversation with Supervisor Desmond, he responded affirmatively, affirmatively to the prospect of being the designated NACO representative, that's why it has been agendized.
Okay. Thanks, Phil. So I don't know if Sue or Rich want to weigh in. Sue has served as the alternate. Obviously, Supervisor Desmond, you and Supervisor Serna have had a conversation about this, so what's the preference?
I, I have not had any conversations, but I don't have a problem if Supervisor Desmond is wishing to serve, I mean, if the board, if that's the will of the board, I don't have a problem.
Okay. I certainly don't have a problem with it.
Well, no, and that was my only concern, Supervisor Frost, if, if, you know, you've been serving as the alternate, so want to make sure that wasn't a problem for you. Obviously, I haven't talked with you about it because I had talked to Supervisor Serna about it directly.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
Thank you.
But again, if I could, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, again, I think maybe to avoid some of the potential awkwardness of something like this in the future, again, we might want to consider agendizing, having, you know, a discussion about rotation so that it can kind of be expected by each member as they move through, you know, serving as the alternate to a principal member, and then have that opportunity to, to agree to serve or not. And again, I think that, that would be kind of a fair way, a fair way to do it, and obviously, I couldn't talk to more than one member of the board in this instance outside of a public setting, so that's, I didn't, certainly did not mean to offer any offense to any other member of the board.
No, that's, that's fair, and again, we're having the conversation right now, and if Supervisor Frost is okay remaining alternate, and Supervisor Desmond's interested that that is agendized, and I think we certainly can make it clear that we do touch on these annually, but that if, you know, if in the future, pick a notation that there's opportunity to, over a two-year period, to have a rotation if people choose to do that, there may be some who choose not to, so, but at least given the opportunity, as you said, so there's not any awkwardness going forward, so. Very good. All right.
If there's, if there's no further questions or, or comments, I'd move to nominate Supervisor Desmond to the post of NACO Principal Representative.
Okay.
I'm happy to second that motion.
Okay, so we, so we have a motion and a second then to name Supervisor Desmond as the NACO Representative for Sacramento County, and we already have our alternate, Supervisor Frost, so, okay, that's the motion. Any calls or, I have no comment sheets on this item?
No.
And we have no calls. Okay. Then please call the roll. Madam Clerk.
Serna?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And the Thomas Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Serna?
Yes, please reappoint Deborah Redbaines, and I'd like to waive the process, and please continue the remainder until May 24th.
Okay. You'll need a second.
Okay. We have a second to that? Chair, okay, we have a second by Desmond.
All right. Serna?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And then last is Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board, Supervisor Serna?
I'd like to nominate Mark, Mark Borges, and we're going to waive the process.
Okay. Need a second.
Do we have a motion? Chair, a second. Okay, please call the roll.
Serna?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous vote with those members present, and that concludes your nominations. And then you have the county executive comments.
No comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Anne. Board member comments?
I have a comment, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sure, Ms. Serna, go ahead.
Certainly, certainly want to take a moment and reflect on the tragedy from two Sundays ago when we had some historic violence in downtown Sacramento, and I know that it's all affected us in different ways as elected representatives in this community, and it certainly has affected me. I know that there's been a lot of discussion following the tragedies that Sunday morning when six people lost their lives and a dozen others found themselves in the hospital as a result of gun violence. I want to mention that I've had a conversation with, with Eric Jones about it, in his former capacity as a Chief of Police for the City of Stockton. He has considerable experience, you know, working through some of their own past tragedies associated with gun violence, and we had a very good, productive conversation, I thought, along with my Chief of Staff, to, to understand what, what that community was grappling with and how they did their best to try and turn tragedy into perhaps a better community bond and understanding around what everyone's responsibility is and should be when it comes to addressing gun violence. I also want to let the board know and the public know that I've been in conversations with Sierra Health Foundation leadership, and I know that they've been very engaged with the City of Sacramento to use the tragedy as a, as a means to elevate the conversation so that, you know, we can be more thoughtful, perhaps more effective around the prospect of making sure that our communities are safe and freer from gun violence, and I, I just put it out there that, you know, I would like to have that conversation at the board. I would like to hear from the likes of Mr. Jones and Chet Hewitt with the Sierra Health Foundation.
Okay, Anne?
Yes, thank you, Supervisor. I, we, I have been having...
Excuse me?
I'm sorry. Go ahead. I was going to comment, Supervisor Serna, but if you're not finished, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I was wrapping up here. So, you know, I know we can't certainly act on anything today, but I would just like to be very public about my, my thoughts on the subject and, you know, ask my colleagues to, you know, certainly offer their own thoughts if they're so inclined today about their, you know, their feelings and their, their thoughts about, about this tragedy and, and how we can better work in cooperation with our sister agencies to, to really, you know, address head-on gun violence. You know, unfortunately, this year, we've seen incredible suffering and, and death, and I think it's on everyone's minds and in their hearts, so with that, I deal with Florida, Ms. Edwards, and I'd like to hear her thoughts.
Okay, go ahead. Thanks, Phil. Go ahead, Anne.
Thank you. I have already had some discussion with Mr. Jones, and he does have some very good insights and ideas on things we might be able to do, and we will be having further conversations. Welcome your input as well, and, and then we can certainly have a conversation at the board.
Okay. Very good. Okay, Supervisor Desmond, you want to weigh in? Go ahead.
Thank you, and, and thank you Supervisor Serna for bringing this up. As a matter of fact, I was, have been having discussions with our ARPA consultant and budget folks about, you know, some District III ARPA allocations, and one of them, we were discussing just yesterday, is about some funding for violence prevention programs for adults and youth in District III, and so I would certainly echo Supervisor Serna's comments about that, the horrible shooting a week and a half ago, and would really welcome, you know, that discussion and see what we can do. I know the county, the City of Sacramento has, has made an investment in violence prevention, some of these violence prevention programs, and I think, as is, you know, sometimes the case here, some of the unincorporated communities where we're also seeing, you know, convulsions of violence are sometimes not a part of the discussion, so I really, I think it'd be great to have a discussion about us working together on this, so, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we'll anticipate having a discussion in the very near future around this and, and do our best to try to help address the issue in any way that we can, so, all right. If there's no other board member comments, I did have an adjournment, if you bear with me for a moment. Came to my attention here just a few days ago that a longtime Sacramento resident, Samuel Soto Ortega, passed away on April 1st of this year. He was born in Santa Maria, California in September of 1935, and survived by his daughter, Monica Ortega. Samuel attended high school in Woodin, California, and went to Sacramento City College and California State University of Sacramento. He also was a recipient of a scholarship to attend the John F. Kennedy School of Government at Harvard University. He was administrator with several agencies, working for the state of California for many years, involved in the development of programs on job placement with both the Unemployment Insurance Department and the Employment Development Department. He also monitors civil service hiring with the State Personnel Board and minority and small business participation with the highway construction projects with the Department of Transportation with Caltrans. Just by way of note, Sam's parents, Ms. Ortega's parents, were born in Dolores Chihuahua and lived in Mexico during the Mexican Revolution. During the turmoil, they decided, just being Samuel's parents, to move to the United States to seek a better life. It was noted that, according to his parents, Samuel had noted that they could cross the border at that time in the United States by paying 10 cents per person. But he was also then a very strong student, certainly having been, receiving his education here in the United States, was a student and an avid reader on the Mexican Revolution and World War II, and he was also then, I think, had inspired him to become an author. He was published in a number of different books. Again, I won't go through the litany of those, but again, he was very, very avid in his study, but also in, in helping to translate and to publish on those topics. He also was noted for several productions of dioramas at local schools and community organizations, both in retirement but during his professional life, and again, those topics being the Mexican Revolution, Battle of Midway, World War II, the Doolittle Raid, and the defense of the Bastogne by the 101st Airborne Division. He was a proud Army veteran, served in the United States Army, and during his tour of duty, was assigned overseas in Germany. In addition to his public sector employment, his family also owned and operated several local restaurants. I don't have the names here, but again, were very involved in the day-to-day life in this community. But at 86 years of age, Sam passed away, and I know was known amongst many folks certainly in the community for his, his work, his ongoing historical, I think, recollections of, of events, both in, in New Mexico, but certainly here, United States and during World War II. So again, our thoughts go out to, to his daughter, Monica, to other members of the family, and certainly want to recognize Samuel Soto Ortega by adjourning his memory here today, so. And that's all I had, unless there's any other comments or adjournments, then we'll be back in session tomorrow, close session at 1 o'clock, back in public, in, in public session at 2 o'clock, I believe, so. All right. With that, then we'll adjourn in memory of Samuel Soto Ortega. Adjourned. Thank you. (end of transcript)